Welcome. City Council meeting. City Clerk, do you want to call the roll?
City Councilmember, Agency Director, Authority Member Doris. Molly.
Present.
Mann.
Present.
Vice Mayor, Vice Chairman Chris.
Present.
Mayor Chair Paris.
Here, thank you.
We have a call.
Move to excuse Councilman Daryl Doris.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Well, what about Daryl's vote? Never mind.
Motion passed unanimously.
You guys know why you cannot trust Adams? They make up everything. All right, go ahead and do the pledge.
Sure.
Please rise. Place your hand over your heart and repeat with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Do we have anybody for the invocation? Oh, I see, okay.
Macy can do it.
Macy can do it? Want to do the invocation? Your buddy here volunteered you. Okay, we'll pass. All right. Uh, anything to be removed?
No, sir.
Thank you. Is there a motion on the minutes?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passes unanimously. So, let's go to the emergency declaration, ED 1, and we'll... City Manager, are we hearing from Dr. Stocks? Or Dr. Trong? Who are we hearing from?
Both, hopefully.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. I just had to lean forward. Okay. So it looks like the, uh, we are at the tail end of the pandemic. What we need now is to complete the herd immunity with vaccinations and we'll be good. I'll go through the slides again, but the slides are now shorter because the numbers are so much, so much better compared to, uh, previously. So here, uh, the world, uh, we start with the world, we go to the United States, then California, then county, then city. Uh, so if the hotspots for the world now, it looks like South America, Mongolia, maybe the tip of South Africa remains moderately, uh, in terms of average daily cases per hundred thousand. But the United States now, uh, is in the light yellow, maybe less than 10 cases per hundred thousand. When you look at the, uh, uh, the graph to the right, that looks, that shows you the, uh, basically the seven day average. And you can see there, it has, continues to trend down favorably. Uh, and below that, the 14 day change, also the percentages in terms of cases and deaths have also dropped substantially. So overall, 178 million cases throughout the world, 3.8 million deaths, uh, throughout the world, year to date. Uh, now we're going to the United States, uh, very favorable, if you look at the map, uh, very light yellow, uh, less than 10, maybe, uh, less than 20 per hundred thousand at the most. There are still some, uh, purple, red spots in the middle of the country, but for the most part, uh, California and the West is doing very well. The graph to the right, uh, tells us the daily, uh, average seven days, uh, cases. And as you can see, uh, we are now beyond the peak, uh, back in January of 2021. Uh, we're very close now in terms of, uh, numbers, very close to the March of 2020, when the pandemic began. And then you can see the 14 day change, uh, also very favorable, everything is negative by double digits. Uh, overall, uh, the United States had 33, uh, million and 500 some cases, uh, and 600,000 deaths. So what are the projections, uh, going forward? This is an ensemble of predictions, and basically it's made of, of about 26 institutions, Johns Hopkins, Duke University, UCLA, USC, um, many think tank, even, um, even Google is involved in, in terms of predictions. And as you can see there, the graph shows that, uh, going forward, June 21st, July 21st, we continue to see a downward trend overall, uh, very favorably for, uh, with this pandemic numbers. So what about California? Right now, uh, as of, uh, over the weekend, there's one county, Modoc County, still has a spike of cases, maybe 40 cases per hundred thousand, which is kind of unusual. Uh, but the rest of the state, uh, we are very favorable in the light yellow color, which is less than 10, uh, per hundred thousand. And to the right of that is a graph for the cases in California, as you can see, uh, favorably low in terms of seven day average and 14 days average as well. Uh, overall, we had 3.8 million cases in California, 60,000 deaths. Also same prediction, uh, for California, very favorable, down to really almost as, as low as the March 20th, uh, March 2020, uh, cases, very favorable, uh, going through June, July, August. Going down now to the county, this was, uh, a couple of days ago, we have 255 cases, 1.24 million, a total year to date. And, uh, again, looking at the graph, it continues to trend down, uh, favorably. And test positivity for the past 14 day average is pretty much zero. Uh, hospitalizations and deaths are also, uh, favorably low as well. So, um, there is concern though of the, of the, of a new virus, uh, a new variant that evolved. This came out of, um, this was the one that was causing a lot of problems in India, uh, earlier this year. And basically, uh, this, we no longer named the, uh, virus after the country because it kind of stigmatizes the country. So now we don't say the British variant or the South African variant, we say the Alpha, Beta, Gamma, Delta, Epsilon, you know, the Greek alphabet variant. So now we're in the Delta variant and, um, basically it caused the outbreaks in India and, uh, also, uh, surges in the UK as well. And, uh, it is now even more highly transmissible than the, uh, the B.1.1.7, the Alpha variant that emerged, uh, in October of 2020 out of, uh, out of, uh, the UK. So it's about 40% more contagious, uh, causes more disease, uh, et cetera. So this is the one that's now appearing, uh, in some communities. California's picked up a few cases as well. So as of April to June, we've had about 64 cases of this Delta variant, uh, identified in our LA County. And, uh, it's occurs pretty much within households. And, uh, so far, uh, the vaccines that we have, 90% effective. So we're still very good in terms of stopping this, uh, Delta variant if everyone, uh, gets to herd immunity. So that's another reason to continue to push the, uh, the vaccine. 90% effective, yeah.
Jonathan.
Step in, yes.
Yeah, so I'm gonna, even though the first part of this presentation is very rosy and we should congratulate ourselves, we're really living in two different worlds. There's a world of people that are vaccinated and the pandemic's largely over for that group. If you've had two shots or you're fully vaccinated from the Johnson &amp; Johnson one shot, you're pretty well done. Uh, you're unlikely, uh, to get it, be able to spread it, um, and, and you're in good shape. However, um, more than half of our city residents have not been vaccinated. For those folks, uh, this is not over by a long shot. When this, in about, they say maybe in a month or so, uh, this Delta variant, which started out a couple of weeks ago at 2%, now is up to about 6%, I believe, um, of our vaccine, could go up to, you know, to 30, 40, 50% or higher. And when it does, it, this is COVID on steroids. This is not the original wild type COVID, this is not the UK variant. This is more contagious and more dangerous. Um, we're finding as time goes on, as research is coming in, you'd, you'd much rather be vaccinated than get the disease. There's a lot of effects, we haven't fully measured, but we're seeing some effects in early studies on the brain. We know it's affecting the heart in some people, affecting the, the lungs in many people, um, causing blood clotting in other people. So, uh, if I had a choice right now, we have, we can put ourselves at risk of, of, uh, getting the disease and having those kind of complications, and death is not the only complication. Or we can prevent it with something that's effective, safe, free, and available. And in fact, it's available for almost another month at our super site here in town. And, and if I wasn't vaccinated yet, the first thing I'd do tomorrow morning is sign up, or tonight, is sign up to get vaccinated. Unless you have, unless you're allergic and you had the first shot and you had an allergy to it, there's very little reason not to get vaccinated at this point. And, and I'm tell, I'm, I know there's a lot of reasons people have for not getting vaccinated. I've heard, I think I've heard them all, um, but I haven't heard any real good ones yet. And, and, uh, so if you don't trust Dr. Fauci and you don't trust Dr. Trong, you don't trust me, read the evidence yourself. Read the studies and then make a decision, make an informed decision, uh, to protect yourself, your family, and your community. And, um, I, if I'm scaring you a little bit, I hope I am, because I, I'm try, I, I, we, the mayor started out, the city council started out saying, we didn't want, we don't want to have one preventable death in this community. We have the opportunity to prevent a lot of badness going forward, but we have to act right now because the window of opportunity is closing.
Thank you for that, Larry. Uh, this slide's just kind of, uh, basically, if you look at the, uh, bar, uh, to the middle of the slide, it has the B.1.1.7, the green circle, that's the current Alpha variant that's circulating throughout the entire country. Uh, the, uh, Delta, uh, the Delta variant, it's, it's about 3%, but P, uh, but, uh, it is predicted to double, triple, uh, especially now with the reopen, with the new opening on June 15th. Uh, more people are, uh, going out, more people are, uh, spending time, and that puts us, all of us, pretty much at risk. So, uh, going into vaccinations, this map shows you, uh, what, which countries are really getting good, uh, vaccination rates. Uh, United States is in the dark, uh, green, about 50 to 60 per, uh, hundred thousand people, not 100 people, uh, per hundred thousand people. And, uh, throughout the, throughout the world, 2.59 billion doses have been, uh, given, and, uh, it's about 34 doses for every hundred people. And the gra, the table to the far right, uh, of the screen, it looks like, uh, United Emirates, Israel, uh, many countries are above us. The United States is towards the bottom there, uh, in terms, we are at 95, uh, per hundred thousand. Is it, is it, uh, is it my echoing or the microphone or?
No, I think it's, it's the same, you check the zoom.
It's the zoom? Okay. So, uh, now going to the United States in terms of our vaccinations, as you can see there, uh, we are, um, all ages of at least one dose is 53%, fully vaccinated is 45%. Uh, so about 65% of adults have received at least one shot. And the goal from President Biden on May 4th was to reach 70% by July the 4th. We're not, we probably won't, won't get there. These are the states, the ranking of the states, and as you can see, California is very close. We are 73% for one and 59% for, uh, fully vaccinated. So we're close, but we're not reaching the 70%. Uh, many other states, Vermont, Hawaii, Massachusetts, they've reached their, uh, goal. Uh, the graph on the left tells us how, uh, how much, uh, interest has, has, has been lost. Uh, you know, in, um, in April, we were giving 3 million doses per day. Now we are, uh, barely over a million doses. And if you look to the, uh, graph to the far right, we probably won't reach 70% uh, until October, the, it looks like October, early October. Uh, so the more we push the vaccine, the better off we will be as a community. You may have heard, um, about myocarditis and pericarditis. I'll spend two slides on it just so that people ask, because the more open and transparent we are about side effects, the more, uh, people are, uh, you know, are engaged and, uh, and, uh, and maybe take the vaccine. So, there's been 300 cases of inflammation, uh, of the heart muscle and the heart, uh, cover, the, the, um, the, the pericarditis and myocarditis. And, uh, although the vaccine-related myocard, uh, myocarditis and pericarditis is about 1.5 per hundred thousand, it is felt that it is a little bit high, uh, for the adolescent children group. So, uh, the, um, the CDC was going to meet on Friday last week, uh, to give a, uh, final recommendation, but because of the holidays, it was moved to sometime this week to give a, a recommendation. So brief, briefly, um, myocarditis is inflammation of the heart muscle, the, uh, the picture to the left. The small heart, there's the normal heart, in myocarditis, the heart muscle is inflamed and it's associated with the vaccine, uh, so far. And the pericarditis, pericarditis is the, the covering around the heart, has a fibrous covering. And if you look at the normal pericardium, it's a nice, thin, uh, layer. In, in, in pericarditis, it's an inflamed, uh, layer around the heart and it causes, uh, uh, symptoms. And this is a lot of technical stuff, but basically myocarditis, uh, you can present with, uh, mild, with the heart not pumping right. So you're, uh, you're weak, you're fatigued, your blood pressure's low because your heart's not pumping right. And, uh, pericarditis, uh, your, the, uh, inflammation around the covering of the heart causes some chest pain. And, uh, it's an unusual type of chest pain where it improves if you lean over because the, uh, because the, uh, you're not rubbing your heart against the, the, uh, the cover. You're leaning forward, so that, that removes some of that, uh, pressure from the, from the covering of the heart. It's a very good, uh, it's a very good medical student, uh, case, because as a med student, if you have a pericarditis, you get to hear the rubbing, the actual rub of the heart against the, uh, uh, the, the bag of the, uh, the, the covering. Uh, so, uh, the CDC and, uh, FDA is looking into this, uh, we will have final recommendations, but we just wanted to address it because people are worried about this as well. But so far, it looks like, uh, I think they're gonna go forward with the recommendation to continue, uh, the Pfizer vaccine. Okay, a few more slides regarding our efforts here in LA County and, um, and, and our cities. Uh, so right now, we are at 66% and fully vaccinated is at 56% uh, at 4.6 million doses. Seniors are doing very well, 86%. And that's, that's really good, they're above the 70% threshold. Um, the, uh, the, uh, the graph here shows where we are, uh, in Lancaster, uh, in, in LA County. As you can see, the same trend of dropping in interest in vaccination in throughout the country is also, uh, the same trend in, uh, in LA County. And, and this here is, uh, the numbers in, uh, in Lancaster as of June 13th. Uh, we are at, uh, vaccination rates of, we're like in the light blue, maybe 50 per hundred thousand. I have a number, yeah, right there, sorry about that. So we are at, um, 60, is it 48, 46% uh, of 16 plus, uh, fully vaccinated. Uh, Palmdale's a little bit better at 54%, several percentages, uh, uh, better, uh, but we're.
A little bit better?
It's a lot better?
It's a lot better.
Okay. It's a lot better. Moderately, okay?
I never thought Palmdale was that much smarter than us.
Oh, no.
I guess I was wrong.
And, uh, that's all I have, thank you.
I didn't mean to blow you out.
I'm done.
Put it in perspective, the myocarditis, pericarditis, uh, auto, auto, basically there's cross reactivity between, uh, the receptors on the heart, uh, to the antibodies that you're forming against the virus. Uh, so it's a normal, we see this with some other vaccines. The, the good news is, one, it's pretty rare. Secondly, it's happening in a narrow band of otherwise healthy people that are young males, um, adolescents. And thirdly, almost everybody fully recovers without any, any serious problem. So that's the good news, and that's coming straight from, uh, the head of the CDC. So I would, if I had a kid in that age group, I would get them vaccinated. I, you know, uh, there's no doubt in my mind. There's gonna be so much more good done, and even if my kid cats it, they're gonna be fine. So, uh, that is not a reason not to, not to do it. So anyways, I, the reason I say that the window is narrowing, when the Delta virus hits LA County and you're not vaccinated, um, this is like having a lot of dry wood out there and the temperatures are rising and the wind starts blowing. And we know what's gonna happen next, there's gonna be a fire. So we got, we got tin, you know, tinder ready to go. So, I, anybody especially who is a frontline worker, whether they're law enforcement, fire, healthcare, you're dealing with the public, you know, again, you, you, many of you have a science background, uh, please consider getting this done and getting it done sooner rather than later. And if you have any questions about it, please approach me personally, I'm happy to talk with you.
We continue to have patients admitted to our hospitals with COVID and, uh, so far, about 90 to 100% of them did not get the vaccine. Uh, we're also seeing it in families, so two or three people in the family, uh, not vaccinated, get the vac, uh, get really sick. And the group that are, uh, now admitted are younger, uh, they are under 50, uh, moderately ill, uh, so it's not over yet and the, and, uh, again, I, like Dr. Stock, I encourage everyone to get, uh, their vaccine so we could, uh, be, be done with this.
Uh, this is not just, I was saying, by the way, we spoke, I spoke today to one of the head physicians, LA County Public Health, he has exactly the same concerns. And there's upticks going on throughout the country that are just below the level of detection right now, it's sort of the tip of the iceberg phenomenon, uh, among people that are unvaccinated.
How much have we spent on encouraging people to get vaccinated?
It's in the hundreds of thousands of dollars, I'm guessing. With billboards, marketing, uh, contests, uh, not to mention the cost associated with the vaccine site, temporary help, partnerships with Kaiser, High Desert Medical, it is a substantial effort that we've undertaken.
I guess people have the right to commit suicide if they want to. I mean, I'm, I'm, I've pretty much given up. Anybody have any thoughts?
This is Maria, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Hi. I believe we have the, the strategy now is more since, um, it's more of a grassroots effort, um, one-on-one education. I'm seeing it more, just like Dr. Trong has stated, it is a lot more of our younger population that are getting hospitalized with COVID. And it is a fact that, um, they have their own rationale, their own reasoning, their own research as to why they didn't get the vaccine. But after the point, after they've been at the hospital, after they've been suffered the consequences of this COVID, they're really seeing that, I don't want to put my family through this. I don't want to put my children through this. If we want to continue to do what we're doing now, let's say, finally meeting with our family members after almost a year of not seeing them. I mean, it's amazing, the, the emotional, uh, mental effects that this has done is unbelievable. And especially among, like Dr. Stock said, imagine the frontline workers, our deputies, our nurses, our teachers, our, you know, everybody. So, let's go back, um, and let's start doing that grassroots efforts and doing one-on-one education, something, so that they can say, it's not just about us, it's about our entire community. Let's, let's go back and let's, let's actually finally get together in a safe way. And the only way to do that is by getting our vaccine. So, I think we can go back and look at some of those grassroots efforts and see what we can do.
Maria, I, I agree, this is Tiffany. Um, I, after everything got lifted on the 15th, um, I had to go out and see my surgeon and see a few others. And the number of folks that were out unmasked, uh, with very little of any social distance, um, was a bit alarming. Because everything's not gone away, just because the guidelines, recommendations, and mandates have changed. Um, and, you know, our testing site is still up and running at Jet Hops, uh, they'll be back on Tuesday after the concert, but, uh, today, we tested a very small number of folks and we had three positives under 30. So I totally agree with Maria. Um, we, we need to start talking to more people somehow, uh, one-on-one and, and try to really, really emphasize, uh, the importance of vaccines and the importance of continuing to maintain some space and wear masks if we're not vaccinated, um, and we're out and about.
People think that South America or India or the UK is too far off and it doesn't relate to us, go read the, uh, Kansas City Star, um, uh, newspaper on, on the internet in the last two days. They're having a major spike, uh, in, in Missouri, there's a, Missouri has one of the lowest vaccination rates, as part of Missouri has about a 20% vaccination rate, other parts are about 30%. And, uh, the Delta virus, uh, variant is, is, uh, blowing right through Missouri right now. They've had a five-time spike in their hospitalization rate for COVID. Imagine five times the number of normal patients in the hospital. And, um, and people who were, didn't believe in COVID, they, were firmly against getting the virus, almost all of them are incredibly regretful at this point because they're sick in the hospital and, and their life is at stake. And, uh, so Missouri is not that much different than California. I mean, it's a couple thousand miles away, so.
You know, the, the reason for this is because us, the leadership of this country, do not have the balls to do what they know they need to do. I mean, this is really simple. I don't want anybody in this building who's not vaccinated. And I need you guys to support me on that. That means employees, you send them home. If they're not vaccinated, they are not allowed to come in here and infect the public. The same thing with the first responders. If the sheriff's department is not vaccinated, I do not want them working in our city. And I want our city attorney to figure out a way to make that happen. You know, I'm, I, I'm sorry, we're talking about people dying. How, how is this in any, any civilized society acceptable? The reason it's acceptable is because we got a board of supervisors that are, are, are clueless as to what it means to have leadership. Leadership means doing things that are not popular sometimes, that sometimes may get you thrown out of office. You know, they, they've mismanaged this crisis from the beginning. They've, they, they, their lack of decision-making ability has caused thousands of people to die. I don't want to be a party to that. I simply don't. This thing is mutating every time I turn on the television. What happens when the, the mutation starts making it more virulent? I mean, we've just been, the grace of God, the only mutation has been made it more transmissible. If it goes the other way, you know what's gonna happen. You know, MERS had a 30% fatality rate, 30%. This had less than two. Can we make that happen?
I will look into the steps we can take to the maximum extent possible. There are limitations be, because it's not fully FDA approved yet.
I understand that, work someplace else.
I will look into the maximum extent we can enforce that.
I, I just do not understand how it is possible that we can't make it so you cannot infect people with, with a disease that could kill them. Now, okay, you don't want to get vaccinated, fine, stay home. I don't want them in this building. I don't want them, I don't want them out there on the street having contact with citizens. It, it really is that simple. Anybody disagree? Now's the time.
So Rex, I gotta share this with you. I won't name names, but about four weeks ago, I was engaged on a, on work site and, uh, I didn't have my mask on. And, uh, I walked in and I said, and the other two people that were there had masks on. And I said, "You don't need to wear a mask if you got your shot, it's okay. I trust in science." And I didn't get an immediate response. And the one person said, he took his mask off, he said, "You know, I've never been sick before." And I go, "Okay, we also didn't have COVID about 18 months ago or back." I said, "That's kind of a silly answer." I said, "If not for yourself, do it for other people." Because I said, "If we get her, herd immunity," I said, "I, I'm a child of polio and I had an aunt that was five years." Because I said, if we get hu- herd immunity, I said, I, I'm a child of polio and I had an aunt that was five years older than me, they got polio. And thank God that, you know, they came up with a vaccine and most people, you know, if you weren't a child of the late forties or fifties, you don't know anything about polio. Thank God somebody developed that vaccine. But here's the end of my story. Two weeks later, he got COVID, ended up in the hospital. All because somebody was so arrogant to think, well, I've never been sick before, oh, okay, all right. That's crazy.
You know, I, I don't know if it's arrogance, I don't know if it's, I don't think it's lack of intellect because some really bright people aren't getting vaccinated, you know? And that's why I think that's when, when elected officials have to stand up and say, sorry, I under, I understand you don't want to. I understand you don't believe in it. But this kills people, you have to do it. You know, all it takes is courage from the top and this would get done. The, but you can't do that if you're afraid that people are gonna vote against you. You know, it, it, it doesn't work that way. This, this idea that it's, that it's, it still hasn't been fully approved and that's why they don't have to do it. I know that's what the, the general at the base told us, that he's having to contend with. No, you pass a law, you don't even have to pass it, the governor still has emergency powers, he just has to say it. If, if, if everybody didn't know that's what's required, I would, I would understand it, but everybody knows.
I, I would say that it's, it's well-known, there's a lot of counter narratives out there that are, people hold strongly. There's people on the internet, it's a bit of an echo chamber, no matter where you go, if, if people, you're going on a site where everyone believes exactly what you believe. I would challenge you, I'm not gonna tell you your narrative's wrong, but I'll challenge you to read the science, the papers, there's enough papers out there right now of good research. If you distrust the government, you distrust authority, read the research papers yourselves and then decide. But don't decide in a vacuum from non-scientists. But every scientist who, who, or expert in this area is saying the same thing. But read it yourself and then decide.
Thank you. I mean, didn't we all get vaccinated to go to school? Every one of us here, didn't they make us get vaccinated to go to school? Why is this different? It, I, I, I'm just not following it. I want us to do whatever's necessary to maximum, have maximum enforcement of this. I do not want to, you know, I, I just went to Els Grove's funeral today. I don't want that to be my funeral, knowing that I didn't do everything possible. I mean, I took this job, we all took this job. You know, nobody said it was gonna be easy. None of us signed on for this, but it's here. And I don't think we should, we should drop the reins just yet. Okay. Do you need a vote or anything on this?
No, I have direction from you.
Thank you. Thanks, guys. You made my day, didn't you? Get out of here. I came in so happy.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
You know, the, the one thing we wanna, before you go, Dr. Chong, the one thing we might wanna emphasize is it turned out that this disease doesn't transmit very well at all outside, you know, and it was that Singapore, uh, fiasco on the, on how they measured who was getting it? That the World Health Organization, you know, I mean, it's understandable.
Right.
But we didn't need to close down outdoors. But the reason that's significant now is the reason it's not transmitting now is because everybody's outside. As soon as we drive them back indoors because of the weather, I don't want another, I don't wanna have to call Samaritan's Purse and ask him to do another field hospital. And that seems to be what you're telling me is a possibility.
Yeah, so, those of us in healthcare who got the vaccine in January, the vaccine only lasts six months, maybe eight months, so we're now on the tail end of our antibodies. So, uh, if we don't, uh, there's probably talk about getting a booster. Uh, so then, uh, we have to vaccinate everyone all over again, plus the thirty percent that needs, that we need to do. So it's really a logistical problem, uh, if we don't, you know, get everyone vaccinated as soon as possible because we're coming up on it, it only lasts six to eight months, uh, so.
Wait a minute, are you telling me we have to go back and get another shot?
We may have to, because the vaccine, it's like, it's like a, it's like the flu, you know, you may have to do it annually. Right now, at least initially, the studies are only six months, maybe eight months, so. But the, the data's not complete yet, but that's what we're looking at. We may have to have a boost in October, you know, uh, when everyone's not fully vaccinated, so.
So is a booster the same shot they have now?
Uh, probably the same shot with the variant, the new variant, uh, you know, adjusted in, uh, uh, in, into it, added to it.
So when are you guys getting your boosters?
We're waiting.
Waiting for the CDC.
What?
We're waiting for the, uh.
Is it Moderna working on a booster shot? I think I read that the other day.
Pfizer.
And Pfizer.
Yeah, they're doing their two-point-oh version of the vaccine and it's coming out sometime in the fall. And, uh, we're gonna be lining up to get it.
That would be also two or used to be one?
We think it's just one. Yeah.
So, what are we doing to, to be ready for that? I mean, what are we doing fairground-wise? Am I gonna have to fight with the county again to, to get our share of this, or can the old shot work?
Let's check.
Yeah, we, uh.
I mean, are they gonna give it to rich white people again first, or are they gonna, are they gonna be fair about it?
I, I, like, we're waiting to, we're waiting like everyone else. The county, uh, I know the county LA is waiting to hear what the CDC has to say and, and there's research going on to see how long the immunity lasts. You know, we can look at other countries as well, who are fully vaccinated to see how long, you know, there, so there's ongoing research going on, so, so far, so good. But so, we'll, we'll, we'll take it as long as, as, as we're immune and when we're, we need to, we'll get, we'll get boosted.
But here's the thing, if everyone gets to the seventy percent, then the panic is wiped out, we don't need a second boost.
Right.
But as long as we let it linger, we may have to get us a boost.
Right, the problem with everyone not being vaccinated, right, it keeps going and there's a chance for a new variants to arise.
Right, to evolve because it's, it's, it's around, yeah.
It's a double hammer.
Yep.
But you didn't answer my question.
What was the question?
The, the logistics of, we, the answer is we don't know the timing on it because it hasn't been announced yet. And once it is, then we'll, we'll, since we've already done it once, it's gonna be a lot easier this time than it was the last time. Because we've gone through.
I, I don't think it's gonna be easier at all, I think they're gonna take care of the people they, they wanna take care of first and we will be second or third again, unless we have some plan in place now to make certain that doesn't happen. And I need you guys to come up with that plan. And if we have to, if we have to file a preemptive lawsuit, we will. But I, I'm not going to have a situation again where the, the affluent white population got, got the vaccine first. In any way you wanna say it, that's what they did, they did it deliberately and knowingly. I, I do not wanna see that happen again. And I want the attorneys working with the deputy mayors to make certain that we have a plan in place to prevent that. If this thing surges up again, I don't wanna see five hundred people die in Lancaster. Okay, can we, can we have that in place?
What effect that whatever the, the length of immunity is, the, the boosters are gonna be dispensed, dispersed sort of in the same order that they were just, the vaccine, initial vaccine was dispersed? And so, yeah, it's probably going to end up in other places before it ends up here, Dr. Chong and Stock?
I, I can't, I.
Don't we expect that it'll follow the initial distribution of vaccines?
I, I think preemptively talking with Supervisor Barker now and, and with her health deputy would be a good idea.
Wow, isn't that convenient?
Have we done enough to educate everybody, in your opinion? And is there a certain demographics that this is hitting right now?
What, what do you mean demographics, uh?
I mean, are they, are they unemployed? Are they, you know, are they home, are they, do they not have internet? Are they, I mean, who are these people that are getting it and, and why are we not reaching them? I understand the, the political side, that I just don't wanna get it, period, if.
Right, right.
We're not gonna get to those people, but.
So initially, the, for, the way for you to get your vaccine was to log in and, uh, and, and choose a site? Well, if you're not computer savvy, you don't have the wifi or, or, or that capacity, you won't be able to log in and get your vaccine. So, that needs to be, you know, changed, maybe more micro sites instead of one large, big sites and, and things like that. Also, uh, um, you know, doctor's offices now can give it, uh, dental offices can give it. Make it, make it so much so easy to give it at, at, at everywhere, grocery stores. Rather than previously, when it first rolled out, it was basically rationed, you guys get three thousand, you guys get two thousand. So, it, that, that was the, the difficulty in the beginning, uh, just getting it. And then there was also Pfizer vaccine, it had to be stored in such a difficult way that not everyone had the refrigeration to, you know, to accommodate it. So, things are being, things are working out, you know, working the kinks out. And hopefully, with the next boost, we now have the infrastructure to easily roll it out, give it in the chiropractors office, give it in a dermatology office, give it anywhere and everywhere. And do not require that you have to log in to get an appointment, et cetera, so.
What about the education side? Are, are we reaching the people that we should be reaching?
Well, the same people who got the infections, uh, the acute infections are the ones who are not getting the vaccines. So, um, you know, if you recall from our presentation, certain Latino population, African-American populations, people without, uh, you know, people without the income, they are not getting it because, uh, for, for many reasons. So, we have to reach them as well.
Would you suggest a method in which we do that?
I have to think about it.
I can, I can, I can talk about that a little bit. I think, like I said before, going more towards grassroots effort, I think, education, especially in the schools, number one. You had a lot of different groups like ambassadors, um, people that were part of like PTA groups, things like that. Those were all closed during the pandemic, all of that is opening up. So that gives us an avenue, that gives us an opportunity now to go to those kind of groups, those kind of resources and pick out certain people within those areas and educate them so that they can educate their, their own community and their own groups. And so, like I said, we have to go back to more of a grassroots effort, but we couldn't do it before because of the pandemic. Things are opening up, these groups are now getting back together. You know, church groups, PTA, um, other different types of groups, uh, social groups are now finally getting together. And those are avenues, they are the ones that we can utilize to educate our community more and reach out those hard-hit target populations, so. And, and again, it's, we couldn't do it before because all of that was closed, we weren't able to do that. But now, things are opening up, we have to educate them and help, how, have them, you, you know, go out to the community as a peer-to-peer and educate their own community, their own constituents as well.
And I know that there have been some Q and A's with the county. A thought that I had was that we could potentially put some healthcare professionals together and go to some of the city-sponsored events that are occurring, farmer's market, Monday bites. And have information there and have professionals there who can answer the questions one-on-one so that folks aren't leaning so much on Facebook, on social media, on, uh, second, third, fifth-hand knowledge and information, so to speak, um, because there's a lot of that going on. And to be able to ask questions of somebody who has answers, who's read the research, uh, I think might be very, very helpful.
That is something we can do. Let's put a plan in place, every city event, we have a vaccination station. Sunday would be a good start. Can we do that?
We already doing mobile clinics, there's, there's a number of them going on, but we can add that to the list for our city events, for sure.
All right.
Can we do that at the transportation centers? We can open them up because that's the population that we need. Those are the demographics that we need to get to.
Do you have anybody riding the bus?
They had one of the.
Macy rides it.
They had one at the metro. They had one open at the MetroLink station, the county did, and the, you can't force people to take it and the subscription rate was very low. So it was open for a period of time and is now closed.
Say that again?
They had one of the MetroLink set up, uh, for vaccination site at the MetroLink.
And people weren't using, using?
The MetroLink is different than ABTA. ABTA is a local bus and, uh, the MetroLink is transporting, uh, people that are working in downtown LA. So there are different demographics.
We can look at, put it at that one and see if there's better subscription rate. We're having very low attendance at our vaccination sites.
But we have to start going into those low areas to get it back up. Ours is not, our community is not a transit community as Palmdale's is. So, we need to start getting to them. So I would much prefer doing it education-wise rather than shutting everything down to that. So I just think that if, if we spend a month trying to educate people, it's the grassroots part of it, uh, go back to the basics, I think we can make it work.
You can put that plan.
I agree, and whether, whether we have vaccinations there or not, uh, having folks there that can have questions asked of them, I think would be really, really helpful. You know, last year with the flu vaccine information booth at the farmer's market, we didn't have any vaccine available, but we did have a lot of really good questions asked of us. And I, I really think that that would be a way that hasn't been utilized really. Folks that have really good health insurance can ask their primary care provider, but those who may not go very often or don't have great insurance or can't get in very easily, uh, may not have that, that ease of access to a medical professional to ask the questions of. And unfortunately, all over social media, we're seeing medical professionals putting disinformation, misinformation, whatever you wanna call it, out there. And so I think if we get out there and we fight that in-person, on the ground, uh, that, that could really help.
I think that, uh, there's been an abundance of authority figures encouraging people over the pandemic as, since the vaccine's been available to get, get vaccinated. I think a large number of the people who are not yet vaccinated don't trust authority figures. I'm not sure that's gonna change. I think a very powerful narrative would be people who didn't believe in the vaccine.
They shouldn't trust them. I mean, you know, mismanaged this thing from the beginning. What's to trust?
Well, a- again, uh, who you might trust is somebody who felt, who believed the same as you believe right now, who actually got sick and barely survived, or some, a family member who believed that way and, and didn't survive. And hearing from the family, or the person who, who did survive but got hospitalized, got very sick. And hearing testimonials from those people might be very powerful. You know, if you are somebody, um, who was sick at the hospital, who didn't believe in getting vaccinated before, or if you lost somebody in your family who, who felt that way and you wanted to talk about it, um, I think it would be worthwhile hearing from you. I, I'd encourage you to reach out to the city and maybe we could get you videotaped. And we could, you know, use your experience and your advice on some type of outreach to other people who might be in the shoesy, um, that you were in before.
You know, the, the, the research is pretty robust, that the scare stuff doesn't work. Didn't work on smoking, didn't, it doesn't work? I mean, because initially I was thinking what we ought to do is film people in ICU taking their last breath, you know? And then, then showing people what the lungs look like after it's been on a ventilator. They, but it doesn't work, you know? Can we give them ten bucks if they get a vaccination at these different events?
We give them twenty bucks when they come in already. We have put taco trucks, we've put jump houses, we've done everything possible. You've given away personal money, the council's put in some money, I mean, we, we flood every airway, the paper, the billboards, the buses, the, I mean, it is, it is an ongoing effort. Short of walking into McDonald's and making somebody stick it in their arm, it's a different story, I mean, it's.
How about all the churches?
We are doing everything.
All the churches and pastors?
We've, we've reached out to the churches and many of them have denied our assistance, um, because they don't wanna take a political opinion on the vaccine.
Let me add to that. I know it, it goes beyond obvious, but the virus doesn't care who you voted for or whether you voted or not. It doesn't care what party you belong to or whether you belong to any party. It's, it doesn't care what country you live in, whether you're, you know, what citizenship you have or if you're here legally or not legally, it doesn't matter.
I think it's the Democrats trying to get rid of the Republicans. They planted these rumors.
We've given away.
And you know what? It's working.
We've given away beers at the farmer's market. We've done it, especially, we have very little, um, uh, people who want to get it. And it's, uh, their own personal opinions and their views. And, you know, it, it is a, it is a difficult task. Our staff has been working nonstop trying to get people vaccinated.
All right. I got it. You know, at the end of the day, the, the thing that concerns me is that you telling us that the vaccine's not going to hold. That, that this thing could surge back at us come, come Christmas time again.
It can, because, uh, uh, you know, natural immunity is only six to eight months. So if you had the infection in, in January, you should get the vaccine again. Uh, but, uh, and then also the variants keep changing. So we have to be, you know, stay ahead of the, uh, of the virus, just like influenza. We gotta stay ahead. And we don't know when it evolves. At least influenza, we know every three years, there's a shift and we can predict it. And influenza, we can look at what's happening in Australia, the southern hemisphere. While they're going through, then we can prepare the vaccine for the northern hemisphere when it, when winter comes. But with Corona, there's really, uh, we don't have that predictability. You look, uh, like one country, India gets a new strain, uh, Brazil gets a new strain, and it goes through really, really fast because it just evolves so fast. It evolves every two weeks. Every two weeks, there's a new strain. And, uh, depends on, uh, unlucky or if you're lucky, it becomes more deleterious, more potent, uh, more contagious. So not every mutation is beneficial to the virus, but the ones that, uh, that do really, uh, really does its job. So yeah, we still, we're still in the, in the midst of all this. Uh, it looks good, the numbers look good, but, um, we may have just a little reprieve before it surges again.
All right, we got the email address of everybody that's been vaccinated. Prepare a, uh, a one-page information sheet explaining why they're going to have to get it again. Why they're going to have to get the booster. Make it so, you know, pictures in it, make it understandable, but let's get that out. Let's do everything we can do and, uh, at least in regards to educating the people who, who want to take care of themselves. The ones who don't want to take care of themselves, I, I just don't want them infecting others. If, if they want to, they want to take a dirt nap, let it, it's their choice. But I don't want them infecting others, certainly not in, in, through city vehicles, city agencies. All right? Uh, the, uh, can we get that done, you guys?
Yeah, yeah, we can.
Okay. And do we have the email addresses or is that something Kaiser or High Desert has or?
Uh, we can verify. I know we get some information, but it's very HIPAA protected and things of that nature. We have to identify that.
Well, I know there's HIPAA issues, but there's no HIPAA issue in regards to sending information out to them.
That's correct. I, I believe we have all access to a lot of that information. I, I don't want to commit to you.
Okay, I do not want to rely on Barbara Friera to, to take care of this.
I, I just want to make sure the information we sent out is accurate. We have not heard any feedback other than this conversation about boosters. Um, we want to make sure we're giving out accurate information. There may be unnecessary, I don't know that we want to give out information we don't know yet, but we'll keep tracking it as we could keep going forward. This emergency is not over.
No, I get that, but, you know, these guys have been right from the beginning. Why would they be wrong now?
We, we, be careful in making sure people don't come to our vac site to get a booster when we're not allowed to give them a booster.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
The, the timing of it, you know, it's going to be determined by the CDC.
You mean, we're not allowed to give a booster?
No, the, not yet.
But if you've had, if you've had COVID, you certainly could get vaccinated. That's being encouraged.
Okay, well, let's start with that.
Yeah.
You know, we could start, start with that information thing. Even though you've had it, you need to get that vaccination because you're, you're good for about six to eight months. And after that, you're going to get it again.
Right.
The, the study, studies seem to indicate that the vaccine actually has more durable immunity than natural illness, so.
Correct.
All right. Okay, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Could you be a little more cheery next time you see me?
We started out cheery.
If I'd have known this was going to happen, I'd have had another joke, but.
Move to approve ED one and ED two.
Second.
I second that.
We need to take public comment if any of the.
Oh, public comment, that's right.
At this time, anyone wishing to comment on ED one or ED two, please press star nine. I will announce the last four digits of your caller number when it is your turn to speak. Please state your name and eliminate any background noise. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each. Please press star nine at this time if you wish to comment on ED one or ED two. Caller with the last four digits, seven, nine, four, six, please press star six to unmute yourself and you may begin.
Good evening, council members. How is everybody tonight? Hello?
We can hear you, proceed.
Good evening. Yeah, I've been listening to the COVID thing and I've listened to Dr. Fauci and his, you know, I call him fruitcake Fauci. And maybe if you guys gave the money like the governor gives a million and half dollars and 50,000, this, that and the other, maybe somebody would pay more attention. And I saw the statistics on a reliable news channel that talked about how half of law enforcement as well as fire departments haven't been vaccinated. And then you have Cole Beasley, who's willing to sacrifice his NFL career, cannot play because he has a personal preference on how he feels. So we're all faced with this, but I don't think they'll be locking us down again because I think the people aren't going to stand for it. So you guys can say this and we can hold a concert and discriminate against those that don't meet your standards, but that's discriminatory. So, you know, God bless everybody and rest them peace though to been infected and didn't make it and those of us that want, but, uh, you guys don't have enough information to be preaching to everybody else because nobody knows what it's really all about. So Dr. Fauci didn't know, he flip flopped half the time. So I don't take my whole three minutes. So, you know, when we can have a real conversation about it, people attending can or dying, but you guys didn't want to come out here for five months. I have to beg you, five of them came last Friday. Thank you for your time.
No other speakers at this time.
Yep, we have a motion and a second.
Let's vote. It's unanimous. You know, I had an idea, guys. Allison, you got to tell, uh, tell me if this works. You know, one of the problems with the way we, we do these meetings is the first thing up we vote on, we have public comment, and there's, you know, most of the comments we get are constructive, helpful. I, I appreciate them. And then there's guys like Mr. Abbott. And what they do is they, at least with me, I inevitably get angry. Or the emotions I feel are never good by the time he's done talking. That affects how I think and how creative I am and how open I am to new ideas when we go to the next item. Now, you know, over the years, I've had that discussion with, you know, other, you know, back when I was talking to the board of supervisors, I even talked to them about it. And, and everybody gets it, everybody feels it. You know, we, cognitively, we shut down, we narrow. We're just not very happy and creative when those people get off. And, and quite frankly, in LA, it's much worse. You know, they get up there and use the N word, they, they swear at you, they scream at you, and you got to let them do it. But I had the thought this morning, couldn't we go through the calendar? Have all the discussion amongst ourselves and with who's ever presenting it? And then open it after we've done the entire agenda, then, but not vote on any of it. Then have the public comments and then vote without any further discussion.
So as long as we take public comment prior to the vote, we're in compliance with Brown Act?
What do you think? You think we ought to give it a try?
We would need to agendize, uh, that for action?
He's not going to, I don't think anybody should affect our, uh, feelings. They do, it's part of the, it's part of it. Because some of these people are going to say things we disagree with, but they could be right. So I think that we need to.
You're missing the point. The, the point is, is we could still listen to that comment. We could still, even if we wanted to resume discussion, we could. But what I, what I do, it, it just, we're all subject to it. The nature of human beings, or as soon as you, you, you have this negative experience, your creativity goes to hell. And I'd like to figure out a way to avoid that. I'm just wondering if we could be a more creative council.
We could certainly try it. I mean, there's, just see if it works.
Let's talk about it some more before the next meeting and see if we can make it so it flows. And then you also have the added benefit of, you don't talk so many times. All right, thanks. You take it off? Go save some lives. Thanks, Dr. Trump. Okay. Anything to be removed from the consent calendar?
No, sir.
Is there any speakers on the consent calendar?
At this time, anyone wishing to comment on the consent calendar, please press star nine. I will announce the last four digits of your caller number when it is your turn to speak. Please state your name and eliminate any background noise. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each. Please press star nine at this time if you wish to speak on the consent calendar. No speakers at this time.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve, uh, the consent calendar, C C C E A, C C one through C C ten.
Second?
I'll second that motion.
For clarity, that's for the C C E A consent calendar as well as the city council consent calendar, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
It's unanimous. New business item one. So who's presenting? Oh, you know, before we move on to that, you know, if there's a medical reason or if you're pregnant and you don't want to take the shot, I totally get that. We're not talking to you. Okay? Fair enough? Good. Okay.
Good evening, mayor and city council members. The item before you tonight is requesting approval to enter into a partnership with Grace Chapel for the summer catch-up tutoring program. In response to the toll COVID-19 took on students' learning, council directed staff to explore the development of a tutoring program. As staff looked at potential partners, it was important that the partner have an educational focus that could conduct assessments of students, academic skill level, and provide targeted and direct learning support to close the achievement gaps. In addition, the partner had to be able to develop and provide a tutoring program in a short span of time and at multiple sites. Grace Chapel was identified as having the capacity and bandwidth to support the city's goal of a comprehensive tutoring program as well as much needed social engagements for our Lancaster youth. I'd like to introduce Pastor Jeremy Hartley, who will present the details of the summer catch-up program.
Thank you, council. I'm here to hopefully cheer up the chambers today. That's my goal. Uh, my name is Jeremy Hartley. I've been a pastor at Grace Chapel for over 12 years now, and I'm currently the community pastor. And what that means is finding out ways to serve our community. And this last year, I've been overseeing our Neighbourhood Impact Community Homes. And, uh, when I was talking with the city in April, they brought the idea of running a summer program. And I was thrilled to, um, run with this program. I, I immediately went to Desert Christian Schools, which is a ministry of Grace Chapel, and said, hey, can, let's, let's put our heads together and see if we could come up with a program that would be successful for the city of Lancaster. First, I want to identify this gap. There's been a gap created by COVID. One, there's an educational gap. The educational gap, uh, is this. Eighty-six percent of Californians say children have fallen behind academically during the pandemic. There's a social gap because of COVID. Eight in 10 parents say their parent, their children are experiencing heightened stress levels. There's also an economic gap. In statewide polls, parents reported significant gaps in access to resources and elevated stress levels for families by race and income. And summer catch-up aims to fill this gap. How are we going to do this? Well, with education, we believe that students will be strengthened in reading, writing, and math, which is going to be our target, uh, and better equip them for their next grade level over the summer. Socially, we want to fill this gap by allowing students to be in a safe and friendly environment where they can make friendships and reengage with their peers and teachers. And then lastly, with economic gap, we believe that this tuition-free program will give an opportunity for all Lancaster residents regardless of income. There's going to be multiple sites provided for ease of transportation. We're going to have a site in East Lancaster, Central Lancaster, and in downtown Lancaster. Now, let's dive in a little bit to the education target. Uh, we're going to have four units of school each day. And we're going to have math, reading and writing, hands-on STEM elective, and a physical activity elective as well. This will be four hours a day with a break and lunch period. Now, when it comes to actually catching up, oh, I'm sorry, here's the, there's our, uh, the units that we're going to provide. When it comes to catching up these students, the way we could actually measure that is with a diagnostic tool. So with a diagnostics tool, which we're going to have my colleague present this in a moment, it's going to allow each student to be individually assessed to determine their current grade level through an online diagnostic called Let's Go Learn. Teachers will then tailor their lesson toward strengthening weaknesses in that student. Students will then be reassessed at the end of the summer program to determine growth, and a report will be presented showing the measurable growth achieved during the program. Now, I'd like to bring up Christina McGahey. She is a teacher at Desert Christian Schools. She teaches middle school. She's a remedial education specialist. She's going to become our summer catch-up administrator. Overseeing her will be Lisa Costello, which is our K through eighth principal at Desert Christian Schools. We have already tested this diagnostic to four, over 450 students to make sure that this works. And the response by the Desert Christian teachers has been nothing but positive. They believe that they can use the information that they've learned from the diagnostic and that they can tailor their teaching to benefit these students. So we think it's going to work. And with, uh, a little bit of a dive into the diagnostic, allow me to bring up Christina McGahey.
Thank you. So I have been a teacher now at Desert Christian for almost 10 years, and I absolutely love working there. Um, this diagnostic has opened up many opportunities for teachers to tailor our teaching for, um, our students. Um, and so right now, Desert Christian Schools is a fully accredited private school that has been serving the community for more than 40 years. Desert Christian Schools operates four campuses and serves over 1,100 students across Antelope Valley. Desert Christian Schools has been fully accredited by ACSE and WASC since 1988. So this is a sample of our diagnostic that was given to one of our Desert Christian students. Um, at the top, you can see that she was in the sixth grade, um, eighth month in. And this list here is showing all of her strengths. So, um, you can see for her word recognition, she's testing at a 12th grade level. And then the next one is showing some of her weaknesses. Um, you can see that her, um, spelling subtest, she was testing at a fifth grade level. And her reading comprehension is really low at a, a second grade level. and her reading comprehension is really low at a second grade level. So this is important to me as a teacher because I can tailor her reading comprehension skills specifically for this student. I know what I need to adjust for her. I know what I need to work on with her in order to better her and to get her, her advancement in academics. The next slide is showing the graph overall throughout her diagnostic. So this is showing those opportunities for advancement. And Desert Christian Schools believes in this diagnostic to help individually assess each student so that teachers can target their tutoring or help with that academic gap. We will present data from the diagnostic at the end of the summer catch-up program in a graph format so you can see that measurable growth within these students.
Thank you, Christina. Not only will this summer catch-up program help with academics, but like I said earlier, it's also going to help with our social skills. Students will engage in team-based learning objectives to foster conversations and friendships. Students will be challenged to work together, something they have likely not done during the pandemic. And we're going to include team-based electives. Fun electives that will be offered will be Lego Mania, Taste Tours, Architects Around the World, Bake Shop, Reader's Theater, and more. Not only is this going to have an educational and social benefit, but we're also looking at economic benefit as well. Summer catch-up is designed to help level the educational playing field for all. Without summer catch-up, we believe that students are not likely to participate in education over the summer. And summer catch-up is going, we're, we're going to leverage our relationship with schools and our 18-year relationship with our Neighbourhood Impact neighborhoods to advertise this program to those most in need. Now, how will we accomplish this? Like I mentioned, we're going to have multiple sites. We're going to be operating at the Lancaster Community Center. This will be our central Lancaster site. We're going to operate at the Lancaster National Soccer Center, which will be our East Lancaster site. And then we're going to have a downtown Lancaster not too far from here at Desert Christian Schools. We'll have a site as there, as well. We're going to offer two schedules because there is a very, there's a variety of work schedules here in our city, which is fantastic. And so we're going to offer a morning session and an afternoon session. It's going to be just like school, students will have the opportunity to take a break. They're also going to be provided free lunches as well. These lunches will be healthy and they'll be diverse. Also, when it comes to the budget outlining this program, we hope and plan to serve 475 students. We can serve up to that number. And this is a five-week program from June 29th through July 29th. At $695 per student, that's around $139 per week, we're looking at a maximum of $300,000. Now, marketing, we are anticipating a strong marketing growth, hopefully right after this is over. And we're also going to be going into our Neighbourhood Impact neighborhoods and going door by door telling people about this incredible program. How does someone sign up for summer catch-up? It's easy. We've already developed a website, summercatchup.com. And it's a team member will email the parent with more information as soon as a kid gets signed up. Registration is also available in Spanish. All of our documents as well are going to be available in Spanish because we believe we want to serve a variety of population here in Lancaster. Now, allow me to close by reiterating what we feel are the most important items to cover. We want to help close the educational, social, and economic gaps in our community. Each student will be individually assessed and taught. Each student will be in an environment where social skills that were lost during the pandemic can be regained. This program will be available to all incoming first through eighth-grade Lancaster students across three campuses. We will make every effort to make sure this program is available to anyone in need. Summer catch-up will give kids an educational advantage as they prepare to enter a post-pandemic school year. We want to get them, we want to get them re-excited to learn and ready to engage with their peers and teachers. And any parent in Lancaster can come and bring their child to summer catch-up, and Desert Christian staff will lift them up and work diligently to get their child caught up. Thank you for letting me present this evening. Any questions?
Questions?
I just have one question. How long is it going to be programmed? How many weeks?
It's a five-week program, June 29th through July 29th. And that's going to end literally four or five days before they start their public school. A lot of public schools are starting the week of August 3rd, so we wanted to start, we wanted to end right before that.
Thank you.
And I would add, the anticipation is the program would be a summer program initially, and then we have funding available in the budget that you're going to be proving that will go into the school year as well. Obviously, there, it may or may not be with Desert Christian. We've had some interest from other folks who, who shared interest at the last council meeting as well as ongoing. So that ongoing program through the year will be a competitive process to make sure we get that all set up as it continues with your approval at the end of the day.
No, 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 no. We've got lots of questions.
Oh, great. I love them.
You know, I want to be as transparent as possible. And I don't, I don't want anybody to read anything into this as, you know, I tend to offend people easily, I've noticed. I don't want you to be offended.
Sure.
But this is a lot of money, and so I want to know that, that we're doing it or how we're doing it. I don't even want to say doing it right because I don't know what right is. You do, right? But how do I know that we're going to be reaching the entire community and not just kids who go to Desert Christian?
Well, we have the relationship with five different Neighbourhood Impact neighborhoods. So there's one in the Trend neighborhood. We have one at the Paiute neighborhood, which is Fifth Street East and Avenue I. We have a relationship in the Gadsden neighborhood, which is H8 and 10th Street West. We have a relationship with the Desert View neighborhood, which is right near Desert View Elementary. And I know at least five or six different principals here in the eastern part of Lancaster that we're going to be reaching this out to. We're going to be advertising this through Peachjar. My goal is to make this a quality program, a program where students really do have the opportunity to catch up with their education and get them excited for in-person learning again.
How do I know that this is not just going to be an enrichment program for Desert Christian students? What safeguards are there? What are the, what are the metrics for that? How are we certain that I'm not just funding? I mean, my kids went there. I mean, it's not, but I don't love Desert Christian. I do.
Sure.
But I'm sitting here as the mayor of the city, and, and the, the, the analysis has to be different. What are, where are the metrics? What do we?
So we're going to, hopefully, the city of Lancaster will be able to advertise this program on their social media starting tomorrow morning. We're going to, I, I would love all of your resources as far as marketing this across the board. I would love to see this program advertised on billboards, AVTA buses. I would love to see this anywhere we can. And that's why I have teams of volunteers that are going to go out into our neighborhoods, especially those five Neighbourhood Impact neighborhoods as well, and get kids coming.
But I'm not seeing any controls in there, right? I, there has to be some controls, so, because I think you're going to get a lot more than 450 kids. You know, how do we know that it's, that it, there's a fairness to this?
Yeah.
I'm not saying, I don't want Desert Christian's kids to be able to benefit, but I don't want them to benefit disproportionately.
Sure.
All right?
Yeah.
So Mayor, could we not? Obviously, they're going to collect information, I would think, that what school did you go this last year?
Yeah, yes.
And so you, midstream, you want an update? I would think that that would be interesting, especially if we think about the fall.
I like that idea, but I want them to have rules.
Yeah.
You can't have more than this percentage, right?
Sure.
I mean, does that make sense?
Yeah, that's something we can definitely talk about. I, you're looking at a born and raised public school kid who went to Valley View, Nancy Corey, Joe Walker, Parkview, and Antelope Valley High School. I am all for getting all of these kids into this program.
I don't question your motives at all. I mean, I've seen what you've done with the Neighbourhood Impact Homes. I, I, you come in here with an enormous amount of credibility. I just want to make certain we have those safeguards in place so that, because we're going to be telling kids no, we're out of space, I want to know that you have a plan. And I want it to be rule-defined as to how that doesn't get violated.
Sure.
That, that we have 450 slots. Those 450 kids are being given an incredible gift. I want to know that it's evenly distributed in the sense that everybody has an opportunity for it.
Yeah, I would say the one, I agree with that. I would say a difficulty would be telling, let's say, a scholarship to Desert Christian kid who would like to come but signs up last minute, it would be very hard to tell that person no, even if they live in the city of Lancaster. At that point, if we're creating a rule or a metric, we're telling them no. And I would love to tell every kid that we can yes to this program. So that would be the part that I have to work on and see, okay, what, what does it take to still allow every kid to come, but keeping this metric in place?
All right. I want to see a breakdown.
Okay.
I want to see how many attended Desert Christian the, the, the previous two years.
Sure.
Because COVID don't count.
Definitely. I'll, I'll look at our registration signup and see if we can make that happen.
And so what does this program look like? Are there classrooms? Are there, I mean, explain it to me. How many to a class, how many to a teacher?
Yeah, we're looking at a 1 to 15 or 1 to 20 ratio with student to teacher. And, you know, obviously, at the Desert Christian site, we already have classrooms, so it's going to look very much like a classroom. At the brand-new community center, which you guys have done a great job renovating, we're going to transform some of those rooms into classrooms. So the city's going to help me set those rooms up this week and get those classrooms going. And at the soccer center, it's going to be the smaller one, but the soccer center has some rooms as well. We're going to make these look like classrooms. It's going to be classroom environment with desks. You know, they'll have the, they're going to have iPads for the diagnostic, all of that.
Okay. Good. And I have a request.
Yes.
I want, is there one teacher that's going to be responsible for that, those 15?
So it's going to go site adminis, well, overseeing that is going to be Lisa Costello. There's going to be a site administrator overseeing all three site directors, and the site directors are going to be overseeing their teachers. And the teachers are also going to have tutors that'll be in their classroom as well.
Is there a plan in place for those teachers to visit the parents of the child in their home?
No.
Can there be?
Possibly. It depends. The teachers.
Statistically, it, it.
Yeah.
It has an incredible impact.
Yeah.
From everything I've read.
Sure.
That one visit, because now, now you have the parent engaged.
Yeah, that's definitely a possibility. Our teachers are going to be working, you know, Tuesdays through Thursdays on this program, eight hours a day. But I can see a scenario where we can maybe make Friday's home visits or some type of visit where we can meet the family. And we could also show them that, where their child tested and show them what they can continue to do even after the summer program is over as they get into this, into the fall.
Now, I don't expect them to do it for free, so if you need to add to the budget for those visitations, I, I think you should because I think the, what we've seen is that in schools where that happens, there's a much, much different.
Sure. Yeah.
Results.
Definitely. I'll, I'll pass that along to our team. I think that's a great idea.
And so what are we doing to measure midpoint?
What do you mean by midpoint?
Well, if you've got a program, how many weeks? How do we, how do we know that it's working?
Well, I'll be meeting with.
Do we have to wait till the end?
Sure, sure. No, I'll be meeting with Sonia and Melissa, along with Lisa Costello and the rest of the Desert Christian team, and assessing each week. Because it is a five-week program. I know it's pretty quick. So we're going to assess each week and make sure that we're, you know, for instance, if we're, if, if a classroom is just doing wonderful in reading and writing, then we'll reassess and say, you know what, okay, they've all tested really well in this area. Let's, let's focus more on math in that classroom. So we'll definitely take a look at the data that we retrieve week one and then use that to tailor the lessons. That's what, that's what the whole, that's why we're excited about the individual assessing.
And what are we doing to track them a year later?
Well, this program, you know, it really expires at the end of the summer. At that point, it would be, you know, a conversation with the city about if this is something you want us to continue on or not.
Well, the only way we're going to know is what are the, what's the impact of your, you know, at the end of the next year?
Sure, sure.
Mayor, from a budget perspective, so we've got the initial summer program budgeted as well, but in addition to that, it's not the maximum budget isn't going here. There are, there are alternate opportunities during the year to continue the program. So that we've budgeted about $600,000 total for the tutoring program. What phase one is the summer program, the speed and the operation here. Phase two is going to be ongoing efforts, and we can, Sonia and her team with the Desert Christian, as well as other providers, there may be other programs that we'll be funding in this next phase as well that helps establish some of those, those long-term effects.
I know I was the one who brought up the, what about other programs, but I'm rethinking that. What I, what I don't want to be in a situation is, okay, we gave you this money, so now we got to give money to other people. I, what I would prefer to see is that we have a centralized oversight, which right now would be you, and that there's the same program being offered by other facilities. I mean, you know, their, their teachers will have to meet minimum requirements and be part of the program, and they would have to accept oversight to, to make certain that, that it's. I want to get the most bang for our buck.
Sure.
And it's, you know, from what you're, what you've shown us so far, it, it looks like that's a real possibility. But, you know, nobody's done it before, so I don't really know.
Yeah, this is kind of a flagship program. And if, if the relationship wanted to continue even beyond the summer, I can see a scenario where we, we take these kids, regardless of what school they attend, we take these kids and, and continue on in a program even after the summer. That's something we can definitely look at. But even if you do choose another vendor, if, if it's appropriate, we'd be happy to share, you know, the testing information to the new vendor and, and help them along their way as these students move on with their education.
I would, oh, go ahead. Sorry.
What happens if the program becomes highly successful and is it 450 or 475?
It's 475.
And what happens if you're at 550?
You know.
What plans?
That's what I was just talking with Melissa and Sonia about, is, you know, what's going to happen if we get past this 475? Because I can see a scenario where this blows up and everyone wants, wants to be involved. We can do more hiring. We can expand beyond 475. If it's just a little bit, like, let's say we get to 482, we're not going to tell those seven kids no. So we'll come and we'll eat it. But if it, let's just say, after, you know, a few days of advertising and this really blows up, then we'll be in talks about, you know, how to even, you know, make this to 575 or 675. I think we have the space for it. We've seen the other sites.
Will you stay in touch with our staff to make sure that it's funded correctly? This is a priority for this council.
Sure.
This is a, a, one of our top priorities to make sure that they catch up.
Yeah.
So we want to make sure that it works.
It would be very frustrating for me if they had 750, 800 children show up, and now we're picking and choosing. That, that would be frustrating.
Yeah.
I, I would add, from a, from a city perspective, the resources are not an issue as it relates to the priorities of this program. So if we have, if we have the number of people that want to participate, not only in the summer program but ongoing in the year, with our budget that I'm going to report on has excess revenue. It's, it's not only balanced, but there's excess revenue in there as well as opportunities to continue to fund this program. It is very, we know how important it is to you. We've budgeted an amount, but that budget is controlled by you, and you can expand that, those resources throughout the year.
Well, I, obviously, I think the first thing we do is develop a program that works.
Yes.
Then we expand it if it works. And that means we need grant writers. We need to get other assistants. Oh, I noticed the county's here. Maybe the county would help us out with this.
Sure.
How many students are actually in the district or in Lancaster? Yeah, it'd be Lancaster School District.
I, I don't know that information. I don't have that.
No, I don't know that. Actually, between the three districts, K through eight, I know the high school district is well over, you know, 24, 25,000 students, I believe.
What's the age group? What's the demographic we're focusing on?
This is K through eighth because high school.
I'm sorry, what?
K through eight, or I'm sorry, incoming first graders through incoming eighth graders. So it's just a K, it's a, it's a first-through-eighth program because the high schoolers are already attending their own high school, summer school programs. So we didn't want to interfere with their credit retrieval programs that they're already using.
I also think we need to triage it. I mean, this is a drop in, this is, you know, it's like COVID. We only had so many ventilators, you know, you had to triage them. Why did you choose first through eight and not first through four?
Because we have the capacity to serve our junior hires. You know, their junior high programs, summer school programs are not out there. And so I'd rather have our junior hires in class over the summer than, you know, at home on video games. And since we have teachers that are already employed who can spend their summer and say, okay, I'll, I'll, I'll work over the summer to do this, that's why we've included junior hires because we have the capacity to do it.
I have one question. So if somebody already, students are already attending summer classes, so they're not eligible for this program?
If the timing works in their family, they're definitely eligible, yes. So it may, if they are attending something with the district, but maybe they're doing it in the morning, and their parents want to drop them off on, for an afternoon session. and their parents want to drop them off on, for an afternoon session, they can totally come.
And what about like, is, like Mayor Patterson said, the teacher visits their parents?
Sure.
Is the parents going to be volunteer, can they volunteer with you guys at the classes?
I, I'll have to get back to you on that. Parents possibly could. We'd have to background check them and get them fingerprinted. Yeah, we'd have to make sure that it would be, um, obviously a productive to have them in the classroom. But again, I'd have to talk to the team about that.
Okay. Thank you.
Have we reached out to the, the school district to see if there's any participation from them?
Sonia, I don't know. Do you have a comment on the school district? We've reached out to the school district. I, I would add, I don't know that we reached out about the summer program specifically. We have a CARES program with the school district already, an after-school program during the year. It is more of a, it's not a tutoring program necessarily, but it's an after-school program. And I don't know if Sonia wants to report on the, the relation, that, that relationship.
We have those relationships with the school district, so we will be reaching out to let them know this program's approved, that we have spaces and we'd like them to refer their students that would most benefit from this. And we're definitely reaching out. And our plan is to continue to expand the program with our ACES CARES after-school program and allow tutoring at those after-school programs during the school year.
My thinking is, you know, we're, we're starting to assume responsibilities for the, the school, which I, you know, if, if we have to, we have to. I mean, but I don't want to let them totally off the hook. Are we, are we approaching them for funding?
We have not yet, but we could definitely explore that opportunity with them.
Okay. Because I see this thing getting a lot bigger than it is now, you know? If we can do it for four hundred and fifty kids, we could do it for two thousand kids, you know? I mean, but we're going to have to find the funding for it.
And, and I would add, the metrics from this will determine the success ongoing, as well as you mentioned. The school district does fund the CARES program, the ACES program that we run and the after-school program. Tailoring that with their funding to a more tutoring-focused effort versus an after-school program might be a, a real interesting relationship and positive outcome.
We did have that conversation with their administrator of the ACES program who we work closely with. And they are open to working through those conversations and entering into that collaboration. The funding, we haven't talked about, but they're open to a, a, supporting a tutoring program.
I, I'm also a little concerned in that, you know, the, if we screw these kids up between grades one and four, they're toasted. The likelihood of them overcoming that is pretty remote. That's just what the science tells us. I would, I would like to see this more focused one to four, simply because we have the greatest possibility of doing something really positive, you know? Major changing with those kids. This isn't a direction, it's just a suggestion that, that I, you know, sort of like our homeless thing. I want to take care of homeless mothers, you know, be, because they have kids, you know? By, it's the nature of the definition of mother. But, you know, same, same thought processes in play. Where, where do we get the, the greatest impact? So take that for what it is. I'm not sure that we, we want our phrase that is catch up, because that implies they're behind. You, you know what I'm saying? I don't like to stigmatize things. So you might want to think about that next time around. What do we, what do we do to take that negative connotation away? Even though that's what we're doing. The, I want this, I want the city looking at how this is working. I want to know what the demographics are. I want to know how many of those kids are, are black, brown, and white. I, I, I want to be sure that this is taking care of the city's diversity, okay?
Definitely.
And I want to be able to pull the plug if they're not.
Definitely. And that's been our conversation from the beginning.
Okay. The, we, we have a city that is almost fifty percent Latino. I want to know that that Latino population is being taken care of in this program. The, all right? So we, we've got all of those safeguards in place? You sure you want to do business with us?
Again, very enthusiastic about this program being a success. Yes, it is a flagship program. It's something we have not done before. But I really do think that this could be a success for our kids, especially coming off a really tough year and a half of education. We want to get them re-excited. They're going to start school no matter what on August third. The, the, the clock is ticking. So I think this is a great benefit. I mean, if I was a public school kid back then, this is where I'd want to be. This is a great benefit to our, to our kids here in Lancaster.
Are you, are you doing anything to screen them as to who, who does get in versus who doesn't?
Um, well, it's-
You don't want to, you don't want to put yourself in a situation where, because we don't have a screening program, it fails.
Yeah, we're, we're going to be asking everyone to follow a disciplinary handbook, you know, a guideline. You know, and we're going to be removing kids if they're, they're not, you know, being teachable or if they're distracting the learning environment. That's definitely in play. There's going to be, you know, there's going to be signing waivers for that, just like they would in any other school program. So we're using a lot of our current handbook material as, as a way to do that. But right now, if you're in Lancaster, you can come. That's how we're wanting to advertise this.
Okay. And are, and are you reaching out to the other churches or other organizations or?
As soon as this gets approved, yes. Yes.
Is there a motion? Oh, wait a minute, I got to do public comment. So, okay, I got to open it up to Mr. Abber to call in and trash it and then take away all my creative juice.
At this time, anyone wishing to come in on NB, NB one, please press star nine. I will announce the last four digits of your caller number. We need a short turn to speak. Please state your name and eliminate any background noise. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each. Please press star nine at this time if you wish to come in on new business item one. Caller with the last four digits, seven, nine, four, six, please press star six to unmute yourself.
Good evening, Council. It's Mr. Abber. How's everybody doing? Hello?
We can hear you proceed.
Perfect. Yeah, I think MBA one's a great program. I, I think maybe as it becomes very successful, unlike, you know, programs like Kendig and that failed miserably, that you got wasted twenty-six thousand on, maybe they can include in their curriculum civics. So as, you know, the seventh and eighth graders, they can learn about freedom of speech and, you know, people that try to rule with an iron fist and they try to discourage the youth from becoming good because you've already failed a homeless mother with Kendig. So three hundred thousand is a drop in the bucket compared to the four hundred and twenty-six you just raised a couple months ago and the hundred and fifty thousand before that. So this should be a no-brainer, even for you. And so, you know, let's hurry up and get this passed. And I'm sure people will think like I do, positively, looking to move, this is the youth we're looking at, not the people out here that you failed miserably at Kendig. So you asked me to speak on it, so I'm just obliged to do it. When you learn some manners, then maybe the meetings will be more productive. Instead, you try to change how the meeting is structured, because if you don't like being here, resign. How's that? Thank you for your time. And it's a very good program. I, I give it a five-star thumbs up. And hopefully others join in and don't listen to the mayor's negativity trying to not, you know, how can we go along? He wasted four hundred and twenty-six thousand and I fifty thousand. And that's not the millions upon millions that Kendig did, which he failed miserably. So at least we'll raise the kids' rights and know that their manners shouldn't be tampered with. And raise them up in a safe community. Thank you for your time.
Caller with the last four digits-
He can't teach.
Caller with the last four digits, six, four, five, six. Please press star six to unmute yourself. And you may begin. Caller with the last four digits, six, four, five, six. Please press star six to unmute yourself.
Good evening, City Council and staff. This is Pastor Jacob Johnson of the Grown Valley Church. And first of all, I'd like to say that I think that the program that Grace Chapel and Pastor Chris and Pastor Jeremy are seeking to put on, I think it's a wonderful idea. I would also say, after speaking to Ms. Patterson and expressing my concern, after the mayor asked City Staff to reach out to us, that I'm, 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 I'm grieved and concerned that the city is potentially going to pour everything into a program that's being scripted versus a program that the city has, has really given an award to already. I would, I want to, to share with you about our Triumphant Summer Camp. I think you all are aware of it. But we have certified teachers. We're four years in. We already have eighty-plus students registered. We have three weeks. It's a, it's a diverse group of students who attend, families. Also, in our proposal that we submitted, was multi-site. A site on the east side, another site on the west side. And we're looking forward to, to developing that, even from our first proposal a few years ago. And I think the difference is, 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 is really a multifaceted approach to education. So that morning session being really emphasizing, not just tutoring, but I think one thing that's important to understand is there will be a segment of students in the community that just will not be reached, because, which is not going to be able to be reached, because typically, students African-American and Latinos will attend those types of places with these programs that have, that come from them. And so we've been successful in being able to serve various different students. And I think it's important to understand that Latino and African-American students, particularly in Lancaster, are already behind before the pandemic. And not allowing a, a comparable program or entity to also partake in this would really be a grievance act, I think, by the city. And a conscious decision-
Thirty seconds.
To say, well, we know that that's there, but we're going to give this a try. And again, a lot of those students in that other community don't have technology. Meanwhile, everything that occurred going into the pandemic, they didn't have technology. They didn't have internet. They didn't have any of those things. And I think forgetting those students would really be a great mistake. So I ask you, the city, to consider moving some funds and allotting some funds to our program as well as, as the program that Grace Chapel.
No other speakers at this time.
Good. Thank you. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve NB one?
I second that.
Let's vote. Thank you.
Passed unanimously.
We're, we're stretching on this and so is the staff. Make this work, all right? I, I, I think it will. I'm, I'm hopeful it will. I'm really, I mean, you've already done so much for the, the city with the Impact Homes. You, you've come with, you've come with very good credentials. In regards to Jacob Johnson's comments, as soon as there's a proposal, we'll look at it. But I would like staff to work with him as closely as you've worked with, with Grace Chapel, all right? Because I've seen his program. He really does have a pro, great program. The, the things I like about your program specifically is you're feeding the kids. It's fifteen students. There seems to be the necessary oversight on it. And you're going to track them, you know? Because the, the only way we can make it better is to track them. I, I don't see this thing going away. What Jacob said is absolutely true, though. There has been for far too long a, a polarization in how we provide educational resources to children because of the internet. It, it is, we have to fix that. When do we fix that?
If you recall, a couple of months ago, we entered into a-
You guys can go. I'm sorry.
Entered into an MOU with Sci-Fi, which is the fiber company that is going to put fiber throughout the streets. We're still working closely with them in the design of the, the asset, as well as where we're going to place internet infrastructure, Wi-Fi specifically. We have a continuing program to expand Wi-Fi in our parks, in the boulevard, other areas, including partnerships with the schools, as well as our camera systems for security. So that will all be integrated into that system.
I want a completion date.
I'll, I'll identify one for you and get you in.
All right. Good. Thank you. Okay. Okay, joint new business. We'll hear the staff report from George Harris, flight director. There you are.
I am.
Hey, I saw your Porsche. You want to race?
Yes. Okay.
Is that a no?
That's a, that's a, that's a yes. I just, I don't know if law enforcement is here. I just want to be careful. We have to pick a, pick a good location, man.
There's one behind you.
Right. That's why I'm not looking. I will be fairly brief. This is an easy item to, to present to you tonight, simply because it just makes sense. From a financial standpoint, we have an opportunity with low interest rates to refinance some outstanding bonds that we have. Based on the economics, it looks like the, the net present value of the savings for the remaining term of the bonds is close to a million dollars with a total absolute savings, cumulative savings of about 1.5 million. It's a small issue. There's about four million dollars remaining on this deal to be refinanced. Interest rates on the current bonds are five and a half to six percent. We're going to refinance at two percent. And so it's going to yield quite a bit of savings for us. The idea is that rather than going out to the open market, we've, we've gotten some quotes from some private bank placements, which is just a quicker process, less fees in the transaction, and they quoted pretty well.
I'm having trouble here.
Should I get closer? Does that help?
No, no, not you. It's, it's, we just-
Oh, okay.
We turned it down for the previous caller.
Oh, good. All right. So, so with that, staff makes a recommendation to approve the, the site facility lease, which is needed to be associated with the Public Financing Authority bond, or refinance the lease agreement, the assignment agreement, and overall, just the, the granting the, the authority to the city manager to advance the, the final documents to complete the refinance. Once again, it's about a hundred thousand dollars a year savings as a result of the transaction.
City clerk, any communications?
At this time, anyone wishing to come in on joint new business item number one, please press star nine. I will announce the last four digits of your caller number. We need a short turn to speak. Please state your name and eliminate any background noise. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each. Please press star nine at this time if you wish to come in on joint new business item number one. No speakers at this time.
Motion to adopt Resolution two-one dash three-four and adopt Resolution FA one dash two-one.
There a second?
I'll second that motion, and that's also on the second page, twenty-one dash thirty-five.
Let's vote.
And for clarity's sake, the resolution of the financing authority is being properly numbered one dash twenty-one rather than twenty-one dash thirty-four, which was an improper number listed on the agenda.
So did anybody get clarified with that?
Excuse me, twenty-one dash thirty-five.
Correct.
Well, I'm a lot clearer now.
On the agenda, the resolution number for the Financing Authority.
I'm just messing with you.
Oh, okay. I was going to make it clear. Used the numbering convention for the City Council resolutions, rather than the Financing Authority. So we're fixing that with the motion as made by Vice Mayor Chris.
Can we vote now?
Yes.
Let's vote. Oh, we already did. No, we didn't? We gave it in?
I did. Let's vote again. Are we going to vote again?
Let's vote again, just in case we didn't. Okay? I'm so confused. Counsel, please. JCB1. Oh, let's wait. Oh, JCB1. Have you rethought the race idea?
No, I think he's still a strong yes. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. At our last meeting, we introduced the budget to you, and with a long presentation today will be brief. That has been opened in the Clerk's office for public view. You have had the opportunity to get citizen input, as well as city staff. We recommend the budget as we presented it to you last Tuesday, or in our previous meeting Tuesday. Just to recap that quickly, it is a balanced budget with a $244 million total budget, $91 million being from the General Fund. The General Fund will, if as planned, will have about a $1.2 million surplus at the end of the year. The major projects that are included in this budget is a fully funding of the parks programs. That includes any special events that were discontinued as a result of COVID. That includes all the programs and sporting events that we undertake on an annual basis. The El Pac season, which is coming out, which we're really excited about, which we'll announce later, as well as continued investment into MOA, not only becoming open and operational, but additional staff to become accredited. Included in the budget is additional resources for public art as well, which we're excited about. I know Andy over at the MOA is very excited about. We're also launching the hybrid policing model, which we've talked about prior to the pandemic. We have budgeted and funded the operation of that, and we'll be working, obviously, with our Public Safety Department, consultants to put together those documents necessary, the training manuals necessary, and be presenting that to the community to be completely launched this year. We have additional resources for homeless and illegal dumping, dumping or doubling our current investment in the community cleanups, which we have seen a proliferation of. But not only has it been a proliferation of the illegal dumping and some of the homeless challenges, we also have proliferation of the operations of getting them cleaned up. So we're going to continue that effort in this budget. And we've created, or continued the investment, or created the investment in a biotech lab at the incubator to increase jobs and opportunities from an economic development perspective in this budget. And we have, I think most importantly to some of us and some of you, a $75 million worth of capital improvements, which include things more, most importantly, roads, drainage improvements, and other facilities improvements that are much needed. This budget represents an increase with the Measure LC, which was approved by the voters, and with your commission or your committee recommending those additions to the budget. Those are included here as well. And obviously, the citizens have a very high expectation of what we need to perform, and we, as city staff, are prepared and ready to do that for you this year. So with that, if you have any questions, comments, we'd be happy to answer them, or make any changes to the budget. We can make them now. As with anything, this budget is a snapshot in time. It is not the only time you have. It is your budget. You control that. So as things come up in the year, obviously, we are in a good financial position that we can react to things necessary, whether it be additional pandemic-related or really new opportunities like the tutoring program, things of that nature. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? This might be the time. Today, Ken and I were at Els Grove's funeral. Els was the previous mayor in this city. And as I was driving there, I'm, you know, running this constant narrative in my head, looking at different projects that over the years had been approved that are really bad. I mean, not stuff we would approve today. And, you know, and I was thinking, because I was in a negative mood today, I guess, you know, what were these people thinking? What was the staff thinking? Why would the staff do these things? And that got me thinking about when I first got elected. I went to a, you know, League of Cities Conference. I don't know if you went with this then or not.
It was before my time, but I was soon after.
Yeah, everybody's gone. Everybody's gone and went. And, but Mark was there, and Mark, your predecessor, was there. And we actually went to the workshops, you know? And 12 years later, I'm still working off of those ideas that we got in those workshops. And it occurred to me, you know, we don't spend much money on sending staff to those events. And we don't really encourage staff to go to those events. And one of the reasons was, quite frankly, is Mark and I were the only ones in the workshops. You know, everybody else was on vacation at taxpayers' expense. I mean, let's be honest, that's what happens. But it seems to me that it's probably pretty easy to enforce that if people go to those events, that they have to attend the workshops. They have to get that cross-pollinization that occurs from other cities. And if there's room in this budget, or, I want us to start doing that, is what I'm saying. I want you to figure out who is the leadership of this city, and then put requirements as to what continuing education they have to attend. And then I want them coming back, discussing it, you know, and expanding on it. Because I think this city would look a lot different had we done that 30 years ago. It wasn't that their motivation wasn't there. It wasn't that their desire to do something wonderful wasn't there. It was, you know, the only way you can have vision to do things is to go see what other people are doing to provide that information, right? Am I making, makes sense?
No, the, down, the Boulevard came out of California League of Cities workshop. So, and, you know, it was pitched to us. You had two choices. You could either invest in your downtown or let it die. And, you know, again, I know there's still some people that have some strong opinions about our investment in downtown, but those are the choices about.
It's okay. They're not wearing, they're not getting a vaccination. They'll be gone soon.
Got it, got it.
I think that we've done extremely well with our staff. Our staff, I mean, you look at everything that we're accomplishing. We lead the world, the nation, our area in every category that we've done. We should be teaching these other people how to do it, not let them teach us how to do it. Every time that I go to one of those classes, they're teaching stuff that is 20 years behind the tide. It's not something that is educational to me. So staff to go to those things, I think, would help for to stay on top of. But if you look at what we're doing at the fairgrounds, we're looking at what other people are doing it, but we're doing it on our own. We lead it, the ABTA leads the world in the bus part. We're the only agency in the United States that is profitable. ABA QMD, we're the only ones that can do that, the fairgrounds. It's the same thing. I think staff has done a wonderful job staying ahead of everybody. I don't mind you continuing that education and going forward, but you guys are pretty good as it is.
We appreciate that. And I'll brag about Shannon. She's actually going to be speaking at one of those events here shortly. So we pat her on the back and give her a proud moment. But the, you're absolutely right, and we agree, more training, more leadership training, specifically for our next generation of leaders is absolutely key. We encourage people to attend, and the additional funding, we'll put in there and identify and make sure that we can do that.
I would like to see the plan.
Okay.
The, you know, I don't, we don't measure ourselves against other cities. We just measure ourselves against ourselves. Are we getting better? And I didn't intend to imply any criticism of this staff. I'm just saying, as I look at the place historically, you know, we could have done better 20 years ago, 10 years ago. And we could do better today. I mean, I really think that that is the goal, is to lead the nation. And, you know, in there's certain areas we are. We could lead them better. We could always, you know, I mean, I get this from my wife and how she runs our office. You know, every year, she breaks it and reconfigures it, you know, as a result. It's, the proof's in the pudding. The other thing I want to do is, is I want our directors, I want to have them learn better presentation skills. Not that they don't do good presentation skills, but we do lead the nation, and they need to be able to go on a world stage and present it. And present it with a level of confidence and authority that is easily attainable if we make the investment to bring people in to teach them. Fair enough?
Understood.
And as we hire people, I think it should be made very clear to them that they are expected to constantly be educating themselves. And that means you have to, I mean, I spent my life sitting in those hotel conference rooms, learning how to do what I do. And I get, a lot of people don't want to do that. But the people that rise up in this organization need to be prepared to do that. Fair enough?
Understood. Absolutely.
And are you in agreement?
I am absolutely in agreement. I think the, we do, we do train and we do focus those efforts, but I think a focused effort with a plan, outcomes, and specific individuals identified would be a fantastic addition to what we're doing.
Okay. And just so you all know, in October, we're going to be in Japan, right? Is that the current date?
That's the plan, yes.
I want, I want a plan in place as to who's going, and I also want a plan in place that for community leaders that want to go, that are willing to pay their own way, that they are invited. And, you know, they save the date. This is a really big deal. We're going to be addressing the world on how Lancaster deals with the energy. I also have found that, that those of us who were doing this a few years back, it shows in their, the work product that they have, and their vision, and their, what they're willing to accomplish. You got that when you went to that thing in, where did you go?
Austria.
Austria?
Yeah, Austria.
Where we won a world.
World, yeah.
Yeah.
First.
So I just want to caution, I just want to let everybody know that that's coming. All right?
Yep, absolutely.
Thank you. And once again, I don't know how you guys do it, but everybody else got killed by COVID, and we're doing pretty well, it looks like, right?
We are, we are in a good financial position, and we're hopefully put those resources to the ground in not only infrastructure, but programs, for sure.
Thank you. Do I need to have a motion?
We need a public comment.
Oh, public comment.
At this time, anyone wishing to comment on JCB1, please press star nine. I will announce the last four digits of your caller number when it is your turn to speak. Please state your name and eliminate any background noise. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each. Please press star nine at this time. Caller with the last four digits, 7946. Please press star six to unmute yourself.
Good evening. It's Gabe at Abern. Hopefully, before you approve the budget, hopefully you're removing Kensington until you bring it into compliance. It's been a failure. Let me know when we're going to Japan. I can pay my own way that way. Don't know somebody. And you do have good staff members. I do have to commend them. I don't want to call them out by names, but since the last meeting, I had the pleasure to enjoy some very, very good people that have reached out to me, you know, since the last meeting. Actually, do their job, and the ABTA is very successful. Well, that's because Mark and Chris is a tremendous leader, and he worked with Macy and the people there, and they run their meetings and their operations with openness, transparency, and civility. And it's really a pleasure. I remember when I went to a meeting a couple of Aprils ago, I was very impressed on how they embraced me. They could see that the information I brought to them was very useful, on some of the problems they were having on the buses. I wasn't compensated. I just kind of rode the buses and did some homework, and they reached right out to me and embraced me. So, you know, that could become even better. So, you know, hats off to Mr. Chris, who does a wonderful job at that agency, and that's why it's successful, unlike what happened here, because Kensington's a failure. You can talk that up to you, right? You were out here. You said point blank, you're disappointed, and the mail was being tampered with. And that elementary wouldn't be very good with the paranoid people out here. Well, the mail is still being tampered with. There's an abundance of violence. So I'll bring this up now. On the 16th, at a community meeting, a senior, a senior veteran in a wheelchair was attacked in a community meeting by someone from Villa C that was in our Villa D. Okay? That's unacceptable.
Thirty seconds.
There's a lot, a lot of crime out here that, so before you fund this place anymore, I think you need to clean the mess up, because the people you've had out here, no one ever heard of Daryl Doris. I've asked 50 permanent people and 50 transitional, they didn't talk to him, he didn't knock on anybody's door. So please, before you waste any more of the taxpayer's money, yes, I am a taxpayer. Please, God, bring this place into compliance, and if you need.
And give my regards to Mr. Henley when you see Member Henley, Reagan, no, no, not Reagan, yeah, Reagan. You know, humor's wasted on you guys. I mean, you know, it takes a lot of effort to think that stuff up.
Anymore?
No other speakers.
I'll move, we accept JCB1, adopting Resolution 21-36, B, adopt Resolution 21-37, and adopt Resolution 21-38, and adopt the CCEA fiscal year budget as presented.
I'll second that motion.
It's kind of weird voting to approve $240 million.
And it passed unanimously.
Okay, council reports.
ABTA, we've talked a lot about ABTA. We did a $120 million budget, and it was good. We talked about a lot of the grants that we received, and how many buses that we're buying. So we're doing a good job over at ABTA. We're moving some of the routes around. Everything's good at ABTA. The budget for the Board of Directors for the Sanitation District, we did refinance the Sanitation District bonds at 2%, so a little bit ahead of George, but I just wanted to see what your reaction. So a little bit ahead of them, and they saved millions of dollars doing that, because they have it. I think Ken refinanced them last time at 4%. We're refinancing them again each time it drops. So we're doing that.
Why did Ken get 4% and you got 2%? Explain that to me.
That was a couple of years ago, and interest rates are obviously significantly down.
Oh.
So I recommend everybody refinance.
Is 4% more than 2%, Ken?
Yes. So we did do that at the Sanitation District. We also told them that we're not having any rate increases, which was last year.
which was last year and this year. So we're moving forward with the old rates. And we're hoping that the refinance of the district will keep up with everything. So everything looks good at sanitation, A B T A, and A V A Q M D.
So George, what are we paying?
The refinance you just approved is approved at 2.1% with no strings attached. Well, I gotta check the strings on that other transaction.
Is 2.1 more than 2?
Just by a little. There were other, there were other offers for less than 2%, but they had a lot of strings attached with them with, regarding no prepayment penalty, or prepayment authority and so forth. So I don't know what kind of strings may have been attached to that other deal, but ours had no strings attached.
The sanitation district has far more money than the city. They have in reserves billions of dollars. So.
Fair enough.
Billions?
Billions.
Oh yeah, remember that? We got into that discussion, you recall? When you guys said that I didn't know where the decimal point was at?
Well, if, if they're sitting on billions, why can't we upgrade it and use that water?
We looked into, gosh, those guys are so stuck in their ways and they can't see the future despite themselves. They're, they're all politicians. They would fail miserably in business.
The sanitation.
Yeah. Seriously, they couldn't make it in, in the business world.
Mr. Boswick, are you hearing this?
Yeah, they're lost. Like I said, none of those guys could be running a public held company. No way.
So Chuck, could we get maybe just one of those billions? Thanks. Because they have such good warm fuzzy feelings for me. All right. Anything else?
Yes, I, I wanted to just give a little update on a medical main street that we started meeting with the hospital leadership, with our staff. So we are hoping to groundbreaking probably in 2022. And, um, we're gonna meet, uh, we, we have meetings coming up, so we're probably next meeting. I will give more, um, uh, update on that. And one other thing I wanted to actually, just as a comment, um, last, this medical, uh, not medical, marijuana, um, operation. Nobody knows that, but Marvin almost like delivered cup, I don't know, three, four hundred people food every day to the, out there in the field. And, uh, just wanted to thank him, like, nobody knows about it, but I, everybody should know about it. And a couple of times I had to go with him, it was a hot day. It was really hot, middle of the day, but, uh, it's a lot of work. So just wanted to, you know. And Lee, you guys did a great job.
Thank you for that. Honestly, and Deputy Groupie back there was a big part of that coordination. And I really want to commend the mayor and the council for the support of the sheriff's department operationally in this. This was a huge undertaking, the largest single operation of narcotics bureau in the history of the sheriff's department. Okay, that took place, it was very significant. And again, Vice Mayor Chris, council members that helped bring food out, that was greatly appreciated by all the staff out there. And I heard comments from the department chief, all the way down from head quarters bureau, that they're never treated like that at any other location they've ever had any operation in ever in the past. They were actually shocked on how our city stepped up to the plate in supporting their operation and it was in the county's area. But without this city's support, that operation would have never taken place.
Thank you, Ken. Thank you, Lee. So is it ongoing?
Yes, right now, obviously, if they, they served 200 search warrants, so now you have all the warrant returns and all the paperwork that's behind that, plus all the evidence issues and filings. So, um, I know there is some discussion in the future because as you know, by your tour of that location and area, there's a significant amount of activity out there that's still ongoing that needs to be addressed. And, um, so, you know, it was quite a huge multi-agency collaboration there that was represented it. And they also have the same issues within their, especially San Bernardino County, being adjacent to that area on their west end of their border. So, and, which is more significant than what is being faced in Los Angeles County. So I believe that there are still plans moving forward. But again, there's also going to need, we need support from the board of supervisors to support the sheriff and his effort moving forward and, and managing this situation. Even if it's just cooperation from the, and allowing the other city, county departments to participate, support.
Is, Chuck, is there any, in, I, I, it's, it's inexplicable to me why the city had to use, uh, Public Works equipment 17 miles outside our jurisdiction. I mean, that really is inexplicable. It is, has the board of supervisors decided to support the cartels? I'm sorry, you can use the mic if you want.
So, so to identify myself, I'm Charles Boswick, I work for Supervisor Catherine Barker. So my understanding is there's a question among county attorneys about the legality of demolishing the facilities when a search warrant is being, uh, served. Supervisor has proposed a, a streamlining of the administrative nuisance abatement process. She's actually forwarding a proposal from county departments. That was up for a vote today. It, it got postponed for another three weeks. She's also proposed a $250 million, uh, boost. Two, excuse me, I'm a decimal point off, $250,000 boost to the sheriff's department budget to, uh, uh, fund some more of the, uh, these, uh, search warrants services. And we've also put a hundred thousand dollars into fighting, um, water theft. There was already money put in for extra patrols and extra hardening, we call it, of the water infrastructure. And she's put a hundred thousand dollars into it. That was our own money and that's moving forward, uh, without waiting for the vote.
I understand that Catherine Barker is very supportive of the, of this operation and, and of the sheriff's department in this. But what about the other four?
Well, I don't work for them and I'm not answering for what they're doing, but.
Are they spending the money? I mean, you, she's proposed this.
She's proposed this, there, there was not a vote today. She, they're waiting for some more information. They were not supportive of one of her proposals, which was to, uh, ask the state legislature to stiffen the penalties against some manners of cannabis operations.
So do we know if the cartels are making political contributions?
I don't know.
I mean, it just seems inexplicable to me that, that the cartels have such widespread support from our political leaders. How else do you say it? I mean, they have thousands of these, these grow facilities, thousands of them. How does that happen unless somebody isn't supporting it? I don't know, is anybody asking the question?
That was one of the reasons for, for asking the legislature to increase the, the penalties. My understanding is that a lot of this is due to Prop 64, which reduced the, uh, the level of, of sanction for a illegal commercial grow operation from a felony to misdemeanor. So no longer are, are commercial growers going to state prison there, go to jail.
And the other four voted against that?
No, they, they, they delayed a vote for another three weeks while we provide more information to them.
She also put in a provision today, uh, in regards to water.
Correct.
And can you tell us what that was?
So she, what was recommended by the county departments is that the county get, um, authority to enforce some provisions of the state water code. And that's about the extent of my knowledge of the details of that. But give the county authority to enforce provisions of the state water code.
Okay. I have a question. Did you call our staff and complain about our Public Works people burning the marijuana?
No, I, I contacted the sheriff's department, complained about the sheriff's department burning the marijuana.
Why?
Cause it was blowing into houses near Lake Los Angeles. The smoke was.
Did we charge those houses?
No, no. But I was told that there was a, uh, older man with a heart condition and he didn't like his house smelling like burning marijuana.
Well, I think that's legitimate. I think it is, but I don't know what they're gonna do.
Where they had it and where it was burning. And people were actually pulling alongside the road and parking in the smoke. So.
That is a cheap eye.
We, we need the support, Chuck. You can call us and, and ask us what we can do, but we need support.
Understood, yes.
Hey, could we take some of that and give it to people who gets vaccinated? Nah, just a thought.
And one of the facilities that they took down actually had drilled a well. And the well, they had, uh, taken it and they built their, uh, two retaining, uh, reservoirs. And they were constantly pumping their own water. They didn't go out and steal it from other locations, but they were pumping it. It was a, uh, very, it was a good facility. It was, they netted everything rather than put the visqueen over it, but they rolled the visqueen so you could roll up and actually aerate underneath the plants. It was a, a big, big facility. And it had over 79. So when we talk about, there's over 900 actual sites, but each site has about 15 grow houses. Some of them have up to 80. So they're huge.
Yeah, that's my understanding, yeah. And they're all, all over the place, they're in Acton, they're, uh, out on the east side, they're out on the west side.
Each.
And when the sheriff's department asked for the support from the fire department and from the Public Works, they were told no. How can we interpret that any other way than believing that our elected officials, and I'm, and I do not mean Catherine, I mean Catherine is, is the exception to the five, are not supporting the cartels in this operation? How is there any other explanation?
They're trying to do it legally and constitutionally, any destruction of private property.
You know, it doesn't take a genius to know what's going on. And, and, and we're going to pay a horrible, horrible price by the time it comes to fruition. And, and if you have any question about that, just ask Mexico. Look at the, the murder rate in Mexico. You think that's not coming here? It, it is. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Where are we now? City manager. Say something uplifting.
All right, I'll, I'll finish strong.
Oh, but I do want to tell you this. I am incredibly proud that our city went 17 miles out of its jurisdiction and provided the tractors and provided the manpower to tear these things down. I'm incredibly proud of us for doing that and I think Palmdale helped us too.
They did.
I mean, it was Palmdale and Lancaster that, that this operation would not have happened but for our equipment. And I want to thank you guys for not taking cartel money. Because if you had, you would have voted against it. I mean, that was just kind of a sideways of giving a message.
And, and we'll take credit, we'll take credit for it and our staff appreciated being out there. But we had one thing, we didn't worry, we, we had no fears that our city council wasn't going to defend the constitutional rights of the cartel. So, just a side note.
And thank you for letting me drive the tractor.
All right. So just real quick update, um, we talked about illegal dumping a little bit earlier and graffiti specifically, but just to give you a heads up, our team, we call it the Tide Crew, um, in June has been out there really working hard at getting the illegal dumps cleaned up. We cleaned up 3,900 locations, um, closed what we call comkates, which are the, the reports, online reports, and spent 2,800 hours cleaning up illegal dumping. From a graffiti perspective, we cleaned up 900 locations, closed 600 comkates and spent 630 hours cleaning up graffiti. So it is, you know, it is a challenge and we, we, you know, we'd like to say we're, our guys are out there doing a good job, but it is a non-stop battle. So with what we're doing with some of the, um, hybrid law enforcement model, we're gonna start putting some enforcement into legal dumping and, and try to see if we can effectuate change, not only from education, but enforcement, but also keeping it cleaned up as well. So we've got a, a strong effort at that, so just want to give the heads up. Roadwork, paving at the air highways going forward, grinding from Avenue K to 20th East and 40th. So be, avoid that location if you can. Um, and then the Avenue J interchange improvements, which is phase one, the local streets is going along well. We had a, we had a small hiccup, so we've got a delay there. But they're working aggressively and getting that paved up. Just a note on that section, there's going to be, the landscaping is not going to be improved on the median. We're gonna wait till the, the inter, uh, uh, change improvements come to fully do the landscaping in there. So it won't be unfinished, it'll be waiting for phase two. So just want to give the public and you guys a heads up on that. The parks programs, the summer recreation and registration program includes aquatic is now open. So as of June 15th, we're going to be opening everything we can from a parks perspective, getting people out, socializing. Included in that is Monday Night Bites, uh, which is back on Mondays from nine to, nine to five, or five, I'm sorry, five to nine. That is the food truck in, uh, in Owen Park, so come on out and enjoy that. It's a, it's a great success. And then of course, we have our fireworks extravaganza. Well, first of all, we got the concert that's coming Sunday. That will be, uh, uh, our first kickoff of, uh, first using Jet Hawk Stadium number one, but to a kickoff from our post-COVID events. And then our fourth, Fourth of July Extravaganza in partnership with Palmdale. We'll have DJ Craigie C there, um, live entertainment, uh, also the Rural Olympics featuring the council and the potato race. And the tug of war between Palmdale and Lancaster, which we will be putting together the winning team. And then limited tickets are available. It is a ticketed event and though, and though it's free, it's ticketed for COVID protocol purposes. So we'll be identifying locations, we, we send those tickets out to. And, um, we'll have more details, so look online where you can grab those.
You want to go back to that tug of war part? It's my understanding that Palmdale Council declined.
That's what I understand, yes.
No. You're kidding. So did they have a reason why they declined?
Said you're too big.
They said what?
You're too big.
I heard it was elder abuse. No offense, Ken.
So they have the problem, they were worried about themselves?
No.
Got it.
Sorry.
Yes, are you still dancing with them?
No. That was decided well earlier by our vice mayor, who thankfully jumped in and defended my honor. And then the, uh, community center, we have a short video, Daryl took his, um, tour of the, uh, uh, community center. And it'll be a, a first showcase of, of what we've got going on there. I think we've got tours scheduled with everybody as it goes, going forward. And again, we heard about the tutoring program that's going to be launched there. We also have a number of different other programming opportunities. Sonya will be making a presentation in the next coming month, probably, on what the operations are going to look like over there. But this is a sneak peek, um, of a tour that staff took with Daryl to show the outcome. There is one moment in there where he's dancing or yoga, I can't tell, but you guys decide.
That guy was really tall.
Hello, I am Councilman Daryl Doris and I am standing in our brand new community center. We have three Ps here that we love. It's called purpose, place, and passion. We want young people and anyone that would love to step into this community center to understand that your purpose, place, and passion will be found here in this wonderful place. We have put our blood, sweat, and tears in here. We have so many staff members that have spent countless hours into making this place a place of purpose, place, and passion, where folks can find their dreams, folks can be inspired. People can come and just congregate and find a safe place.
I think what excites me most about the center is that when we open our doors, we'll have people of diverse backgrounds, age groups, ethnicities, and whatnot, different interests coming to the center. And our goal is that when they come, they'll find their passion and their purpose when they enter this place.
Through this process, staff engaged our surrounding businesses, our stakeholders, and surveyed our community in order to provide responsible. in order to provide responsive programming and services here at the Lancaster Community Center.
I want you to look at this valuable place, this wonderful place that our staff and our council and our great mayor, Mayor Rex Paris, has just brainstormed and put together for our young people. Thank you.
Not exactly sure what that last move was, but nonetheless.
Daryl can't do the dance off with Palmdale.
And then finally, I'll give a shout out to Sonya and her team, Julie Sikori specifically, on L-PAC season coming. So I think your brochures are in your boxes, I think they're out in the community right now. So they have done a wonderful job, not only in COVID when they were shut down, but now coming out. There's a couple of acts that I want to see, probably, I have a different taste than some of you, but nonetheless, you'll, there's something in here for everybody to participate in and it'll be good to see L-PAC open and operational again. So that's coming soon. So with that done and if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
You know, it sounds like we're gonna have a great year. It's coming together. And so, a couple of things. Hybrid police, when is that operational?
Mayor Paris, we've already done a lot of things incrementally moving forward to that. I mean, we could have a breakout any day. We've instituted a lot of infrastructures related to it now with the budget approval, some additional staffing that we're operating. We've already selected based on a concentration of crime data through IBM Watson, as well as the Sheriff's Department data on locations to initially kick this off and we're ready to roll there shortly. We have just a few positions to fill in the interim, working with HR, and then we can roll things out very shortly.
When is that operational? I want a date.
It is, it is operational currently. They're, they're currently doing administrative citations, doing the necessary things associated with that. With the additional staff, we will then ramp up the magnitude of those. So there are certain things that need to be put in place, training manuals, things of that nature. But within two months, I believe you're gonna be ribbon cutting, if you, from a vehicles perspective, fully staffed, hybrid police department will be operating two months from now.
Thank you. Something I wanted to know.
We're excited about it.
You should be. I, I'm really, that's gonna be, that's gonna be a paradigm change and I'm excited about it too. The, there's an issue I want to talk about. You know, delivering marijuana in this city is illegal at the moment, at the present time. It's just illegal. But we got billboards as I drive through the city advertising, call this number and we'll deliver marijuana to you. I would like the city to explain to Lamar that they are aiding and abetting a crime and they cannot do that in our city. And I want those billboards down. We either enforce the law in this city or we don't. That, that to me is just such a... Do I need to talk about it? I mean, isn't it clear we shouldn't do that? I mean... Guys, help me out here.
It was my understanding that we could, they, they could deliver legally. They can't have a dispensary, but we can't stop them from delivering. That was my understanding.
State, state law allows delivery into any city. We, they cannot operate their delivery business from inside of Lancaster, but they are allowed to drive into Lancaster to deliver. And that, we don't have the ability to stop that.
They can put up billboards, they can... Is that just major league stupid or what?
I'm gonna go with no comment.
All right. So... But they can, I mean, does anybody recognize we're not getting the taxes?
No, I think it's, it's, that's part of what I thought we were trying to accomplish with our last ordinance.
Well, apparently we gotta change that ordinance a little bit to make it happen. Let's just do that, all right?
That's, that's good.
We can't have, I mean, I, 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 we're talking about millions of dollars are leaving this city that, that should stay in the city. Am I right on that? I mean, I guess...
Well, if you take the emotional, what I've been doing and explaining it to people is if you take it out, the emotion side of it and say, we're not allowed to have a round table pizza in Lancaster, but they can deliver here. That's what it's saying. And they still profit from it, they still do everything and the taxes go elsewhere. They're all going to Cal City right now.
I want to fast track this, okay? You know what I want to fast track?
I believe I do. And if I have questions, I'll call you.
Next meeting. Let's fix it so that we can grab that income stream. Okay. And when we talked about it last time, you were talking about a, a drug treatment program.
Correct.
We, we're well on our way to developing something that's gonna be quite innovative and I'm really hopeful for it. We have that meeting next week. One of the best uses for the income stream off of that. I think. Yeah, I agree. I agree. All right, where are we now? City clerk. Let's open the doors.
This is the time to address the city council agency authority on non-adjourned matters. Speaker cards can be found on the back table of the council chambers. For those who are joining telephonically or virtually and would like to comment on non-adjourned items, please press star nine at this time. I will announce the last four digits of your caller number when it is your turn to see. Please state your name and eliminate any background noise. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each. Please keep in mind state law prohibits the city council from acting on items not listed on the agenda and your matter may be referred to the city manager. Thank you. Caller with the last four digits, seven, nine, four, six, please press star six to unmute yourself.
Any council matter, rivers and citizens in staff, David Albert. Just doing a little housekeeping here. I want to thank the city manager last week when he so eloquently brought the mayor's attention that there are numerous service calls there. Today there was deputies out here, detectives on the 15th with the attack and firing dudes were out here in the last two weeks, numerous, numerous times. So, you know, that's something that needs to be taken care of, but like I said, we still have the problems here. And I'm gonna repeat myself because nobody out here knows, Councilman Doris can't tell me the name of anybody because nobody knows who they are. I even gave his phone number to one of the ladies that came up to me today and told me she was attacked. So they reached out to me for help, but you guys are failing them. There's women that won't take their trash out because why? Because when they go in with the trash bin, there's people in there naked having sex and doing drugs. And then when you call security and tell them about it, guess what happens? They can see them on the video cameras coming out, but they don't do anything because everything is so secretive around here. So people out here aren't safe, so if whoever wants to come out, I'll take you right to their apartment. Oh, and I forgot to mention, we have gray water and it's not the CCR. That's the California Code of Regulation, in case anybody doesn't know what that is. And last it was out here today, but they didn't bring their thermometer when they toured my apartment. And then the lady downstairs had a thermometer, but they didn't want to use it because we don't have water hot enough to wash our dishes, okay? The lady's water 80 degrees. The CCR says it should be 135, so your hands will be burnt when you put, when you're washing your dishes. We're not asking for dish washing, we're just asking for water hot enough to be able to clean our dishes. So you guys kinda know what the problems are. I pointed them out, it's not about picking up the dog dropping, which is a hell of a...
Thirty seconds.
I go around and for everybody. So, you know, if Heather and Daryl want to call me, I talked with the people in control out here from the people concerned. They didn't ask for me when they came out and when you were out here, Rex, and talked to Joel about the mailboxes, you didn't ask for me either, which means you really don't want to hear the truth. This has been a failure. If you want to save this, come on out and I'll show you where all the...
You know, I've been trying to figure out what time is. Been reading a lot of books about time, you know, and how discreet you can make it, you know? And I think I, Mr. Uppert has helped me figure it out. It really is relative, you know? Sometimes three minutes goes really fast and sometimes it goes really slow. I just thought I would make that comment. Now, that being said, Heather, you have a card, I've missed you, come talk to us. How'd you sneak in?
Hello, city council and mayor.
So are you vaccinated?
Uh, no, I am not. Because I have a prolapsed mitral valve in my heart and with all the blood clotting and everything, I'm...
You know, I got connections, I could probably get you one tomorrow.
A new heart? Actually, I'm here to just tell you guys information, that's all I'm ever here for, right? 1.5 million gallons of water, potable drinking water, was used to clean off the 45,000 acres of solar farms. Now, the guy, one of the guys that own it, Scott, and I'm not sure if I'm pronouncing his name right, Holkey or something up to that effect, told me that they were trying to design the 10% efficient solar panels. Yes, I said that 10% efficient solar panels, because when dust gets on the solar panels, they're zero efficient. And they've created that dust, okay? So they've kind of done it to themselves, but they couldn't use our water. He said it, our water wasn't good enough, which shocked me because it's potable drinking water. They're just spraying on these things and let, letting fall on the ground and it's not watering anything because they mow and it's not giving anything to, I mean, it's being wasted. And that's a lot of water. I don't know how much they pay or if they even have to pay, but I would charge them double. And the air quality now is, I'm sure you've noticed, are kind of dusty. I have the data from the air pollution station and he was saying that they needed better equipment to monitor to find out. But the area where the 45,000 acres of solar farms currently occupy, some of that was where LAX and Magic Mountain dumped their toxic chemicals. So when I went to the planning commission hearing in Kern County, because I own 25 acres out there, that's the only reason I knew about all this, is they told me that they were not responsible for any wind particulates that would make our town, the quality of life here, worse. And I said, well, what are you talking about? Just plant some trees, do the math, figure out where you have to plant them, and plant the pepper trees like they have on the side of the freeway going up Palm Springs, right? Resolve the issue of the wind and the dirt. And, you know, the pepper trees, actually, they're called California pepper trees now, don't require any maintenance, hardly any water. And if you plant them three deep, three rows deep, like they have on the way to Palm Springs, they prevent the dirt and the wind from blowing particulates into our beautiful little town. So I don't know, I don't know how to, maybe you can call them and influence them. But I told them, I said, you're gonna be responsible for irreparable damages because COPD is the number one killer. And if you're just disregarding the information... I mean, they said they weren't responsible for the air past 90th West and Avenue A, you know? And I thought, oh, so past that point, anything that passes our way is just our problem. I, I mean...
I couldn't understand you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You didn't get vaccinated and you have to wear a mask and it's...
No, I don't have to wear a mask, but I prefer to because I don't...
But if you got vaccinated and you didn't have to wear your mask...
I'm not gonna get vaccinated, okay? I'm just not. I don't abide by everybody else's rules because I'm not like everyone else. But if you didn't hear me, I said, there's an easy remedy for the solar dust problem and that's to plant the California pepper trees.
Heather, your, your, your reasoning is sound, but it's just not true.
Well, actually...
Let me, let me finish.
All right.
The pollution comes from South Coast and it comes from, which is the Los Angeles Basin and it migrates over the mountains into here. And the pollution comes from the San Joaquin Valley that is polluted by San Francisco.
Right.
So San Francisco's comes down there and they both meet here. So a row of pepper trees is not gonna stop that. It goes through mountains and everything.
No, I understand what you're saying.
But that's, that's the majority of where it comes from. It doesn't come from the solar farms, it doesn't come from, there is very little pollution that is created in the Antelope Valley. The majority, 90, 95% of the pollution is created in South Coast and through the San Joaquin Valley. It migrates here.
Right, but it migrates through the, you know where the freeway on the west side, you know, Gorman? That little opening for the valley, that's where it comes through. And it picks, the wind picks up through that little valley and when you have no vegetation... I mean, if you want to get a copy of this data I got from the air, air pollution control station, you know?
Heather.
Yes.
If you're not gonna get vaccinated, what does it matter?
Oh, my gosh.
I mean, seriously.
I have allergies really bad and I broke my nose.
COVID's gonna get you long before the pollution does.
No, I've already had COVID and it didn't get me. It's kind of like, whatever, I could make comments on that, but I won't.
Thanks, Heather.
Anyways, I mean, anything...
Even though you're not gonna be around much longer, but...
Probably longer than you. I mean, they, the guy told me he was trying to design the solar panels, the 10% efficient. I mean, do you all want something that's 10% efficient?
Heather, you know that thing I was saying about time?
Yeah, I know.
Three minutes up.
But they're 10% efficient with the dirt on them, so.
Thanks.
FYI.
Marvin is right, though. It really is from other areas.
We have one additional commenter on the phone.
Oh.
Caller with the last four digits, six, three, five, eight. Please press star six to unmute yourself. Caller with the last four digits, six, three, five, eight.
Yes, hi, council. Hi, Mayor Paris. My name is Stephen Updike. I'm a health educator at Tarzana Treatment Center and I just wanted to take this opportunity to share with the community and council some of the healthcare services that we offer to the valley, especially now as we're moving to reopen. So Tarzana Treatment Center in Lancaster offers, and Palmdale offers, an array of person-centered integrated healthcare. Integrated healthcare is, helps patients navigate linkages to multiple different issues they're suffering from. And we offer the primary care clinics, both on Lancaster Boulevard as well as Palmdale Boulevard. They offer, their offerings include HIV services. We also do offer substance use treatment services at both inpatient, residential, and outpatient formats for both adult and youth. That's at our 10th Street West foundation, our offices. We offer mental health services, counseling, even including telehealth services, sober living services throughout the county in several locations, providing transitional, residential to independent living. And we also do take most insurance, including Medi-Cal and Medicare, and they have linkage navigators to help sign those people that need help, sign up. And then we also do offer substance use and alcohol and other drug prevention services, which is the program I work in out of 10th Street West. I'm familiar with a few of there, a few of you there. We've worked with Mr. Garrico a couple of times and feel that we're valued partners with the city and vice versa. The last offer I'm going to mention or service provided is, is new but very relevant right now. And that's they, Tarzana is offering COVID vaccinations to the public. It's by appointment, but it is open to the public. And I really salute you for your strong position in support of the vaccinations. With all that said, I don't have a number for the...
Don't go anywhere, I got, I got a question. I heard that...
Absolutely.
I heard you guys have funding for needle exchange program. Is that right?
I believe they're looking at that. In my program, I don't have any detailed knowledge of that.
I actually heard that you have the funding, but you're not doing it up here because you were concerned about the politics of it. Is that accurate?
I do not know that that's accurate, but again, that wouldn't be within the knowledge I would have at my prevention program. I can certainly look into that and explore it.
Because I would like to have that program up and. I would like to have that program up and running in the city of Lancaster. I, I do not want people using, I mean, I would prefer they not be drug addicts. I would prefer that they get drug treatment. I would prefer that we deal with the addiction. But until they do, I don't want to hear another story about a six-month-old homeless woman who was six-month pregnant. I mean, she wasn't six months old, she was six months pregnant, going through the dirty needles, trying to find the cleanest one she could to use. I mean, if you guys have the funding, let's get it up and running. Fair enough?
I, yeah, I couldn't agree more and I will actually speak to my coordinator tomorrow and see if that is in the works and if there's any barriers and we'll put her in contact with someone to provide an appropriate answer. But that clearly is a foundational principle of harm reduction, which Public Health and our team supports fully. So I will respond with a number of four vaccination appointments and any information I have on needle exchanges and I will supply that to Mr. Durico's office tomorrow.
Seems like it'd be a good time to, you know, offer the drug treatment program too when they come in to get the new needles.
It absolutely does. That's, that's exactly how it should happen, is in that interaction, education, and offerings of assistance provided in that same space that many of them accept when they're ready to. And yeah, that's how it is supposed to work, absolutely.
Great, thank you.
So I will provide that information tomorrow to Mr. Durico's office and I really appreciate your all's time. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that it?
No other speakers at this time.
Good. I mean, not good, but. Okay. Council Agency Authority comments. Any comments? Then we will return. The City Council will, before I do that, you know, I was, that funeral kind of had me thinking about a lot of stuff today. One of the things I noticed was here's, I saw a picture of Els cutting the ribbon on the council chain, you know, this building, when the first city council or the first city hall that was ever built in Lancaster. And I thought about all the things they accomplished. I mean, they accomplished a lot of stuff, you know? I mean, the building for, but at the end of the day, I'm watching, I'm looking at these, the picture of him doing it and the rest of the council that was there. And, you know, I've been pretty involved in city politics from the inception and some of them I didn't recognize. I mean, that's, that's how quickly it fades. That's how fleeting it all is. And, you know, the only thing that really lasts is how we change the fabric of this city, how we improve the fabric of the city. And none of us are going to get credit for it. I mean, you know, it's fleeting, but, you know, 10 years from now, they're not going to know what I, who I am. They're not going to know who you are. But what they.
He's got a point there.
Other than Marvin's roundabout, which quite frankly, I mean, I don't know who Jane Reynolds is. You know Jane Reynolds Park? I mean, I don't know who that is. I don't think anybody knows anymore. But those people did change the fabric of it and we do live much better lives because of a lot of the things they do. And that's really what you all are doing. You're changing the fabric of this city and it's going to go on for 100 years at least. Then climate change will get us, but until then, until then, I mean, what you're doing really makes a difference and I wanted you to know how much I appreciate it. I was also aware too, though, that, you know, the only thing that mattered at that funeral were the family pictures. It's the only thing that mattered. It, how well we, I mean, he had a great family. They clearly loved him a great deal and that really was the only thing that counted, was that relationship with his family. And I hope we don't forget that also. What we're doing is incredibly important. It just doesn't, it, you know, it's the goal. It's not the personality, because the personalities are pretty, pretty meaningful, so at the end of the day, I think. I just thought I would share that with you. The City Council will adjourn in memory of former Lancaster Mayor Ellsworth E. Groves, who passed away on June 13, 2021. Grove served as the Vice Mayor of Lancaster in 1986. He there served as a council member up until his term as mayor in 1988. What this doesn't say is he was a captain in the Highway Patrol and he left a family that all of them are deeply involved in public service. We have Sandy Smith, who serves on the Planning Commission and everything else I can think of. The fair. They are a family of service. And his granddaughter, Carrie, is a deputy mayor for criminal justice. She's a district attorney with the Los Angeles County District Attorney's Office. He left an impact on this city and he is missed. And with that, the next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, July 13, 2021. I hope to see everybody at the Trace Atkins, Atkins, Atkins concert on Sunday. That'll be the first big event we put on. It should be hellaciously fun and this, all the staff is of course invited. Let's have a great time. All right? Thank you. Are we doing Field of Dreams?
Drafts.
Drafts? Field of dra, what's it called?
Yes.
Field of drafts? Well, couldn't we give them a free draft with a vaccination?
We were calling it a, what would we call it, a shot in the chaser? Yeah, so yes, absolutely. All of our events will now, based on your recommendations, have vaccinations.
Great. I mean, we might even give them two drinks for, maybe we should give them the two drinks and then ask them to take the shot.
Would you please declare us adjourned?
What?
Would you please declare us adjourned?
Oh. Adjourned.
Thank you.